All right, everyone. We're going to call this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees to order. And just as a point of order before we begin the meeting, there are recent media reports that there was a shooting in Uvalde, Texas at an elementary school. And the recent reports, I mean, that's just media reports, that 14 children and a teacher have succumbed to the violence. And it's appropriate that we take a moment of silence. So please, let's do that. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Madam President Taylor. Vice President Nicolette.
President. I am here. Trustee Church. Trustee Mayberry. Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Smith. And I imagine Victoria will be delayed. We have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's go. I'll leave this in the pledge. It's all stand. Ready to begin.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we're going to Agenda Item 1.04. This is action to adopt the agenda. Looking for a motion if that is the pleasure of the board. Wait, first of all, do we have any public comment? No public comment? Thank you. Looking for a motion if that's the pleasure of the board to adopt the agenda.
Move.
Moved by Clerk Minetta. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Rodriguez. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? The motion carries. Let the record show it, it is unanimous. Thank you. We're going to go on to our consent agenda items. And all of these items are considered routine in nature. However, they may be pulled at the request of a trustee with the approval of the president. And we have the practice of if an item has previously been deliberated by this body, right, not the Board, Policy Committee, but by this body, then it will take two trustees to pull it for consideration again. So right now, we're looking for approval for consent agenda items 2.02 and 2.33. And I know for certain, Trustee Church, you have an item or two you'd like to pull.
I'm going to request 2.13 and 2.26, but I also believe there's public comment.
Yeah, I'll get to public comment. Just looking at what we might be looking at.
2.13 and 2.26.
Okay, 2.13 and 2.26. Looking at that, 2.13, I believe, has been deliberated by this body before, as this is the possible action on final approval. And so that item will not be pulled unless there are two trustees that want that item pulled. Okay, so before we go any further, why don't we take public comment, and then we'll look for a motion and go from there?
Jeff Church.
Thank you very much. The fact that I'm up here is in no way meant to be disrespectful to the board. I simply talked to the board president about how we can, how I can explain why I want the item pulled without violating protocol or open meeting law. So this is the format to do that. Policy 2 point, Policy 9110, Meetings and Protocol for the Board of Trustees, there's a number of issues that I found that I handed out in your handout and that are on the public record, including a typo, but a number of areas of concern. I also found out that we have Policy 9115, which is in your handout called Meetings of the Board of Trustees. So they seem to conflict with each other, and they seem to be duplicate in nature. But there's a number of issues that I brought up in your handout that I really hope that we can get to discuss some. If not, I'll discuss them during, on my own. But number one, it talks about moving an item off the agenda, but it doesn't say the procedure if there's a vote. And on page four, it talks about two trustees requesting things be removed from the agenda. But then under 4C, it seems to, has a typo, and it seems to be a bit contradictory. There's another of other areas that I think we need to discuss. If the board president has the entire power to take things off the agenda or delay them. Because again, if two trustees want something on the agenda, but yet this further policy leader says that the board president manages the meeting, including pulling or delaying. So basically, I'm just hoping we get an opportunity to discuss it briefly, and then if you want to pass it, we pass it. But I think there's enough issues that have come up to my attention that it's worth discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Are there any other public comments on this item, JJ?
That's all I have for consent.
Okay, thank you very much. So what we're looking for then, again, unless there is a second trustee, and that was on the consent agenda item 2.13, correct, Trustee Church? So 2.26 hasn't been deliberated, so that item will be pulled. So I'll ask staff on that agenda item to prepare to come forward. There are going to be some questions from Trustee Church. Seeing no, no further action from other trustees, and I'm regarding consent agenda item 2.13, I'm looking for a motion to approve consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.25, and then 2.27 through 2.33. Is there most, there's a motion, Trustee Rodriguez? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Nicolette. Discussion, Trustee Church?
So for discussion, the only thing being pulled is 2.26?
Yes, sir. No, he said 2.6. Correct, right?
That's the only thing that's being pulled.
Yes, 2.26, yeah. That was clarification, was it 1.6 or 2.6? It's 2.6, 2.6. And just while we consider this, I do want to, I am remiss from not acknowledging, for not acknowledging our incoming superintendent, Dr. Susan Enfield, who's joining us on the screen. As I said, notice, I didn't say new superintendent, because that would imply.
The old superintendent.
So I noticed I did not do that. You're welcome.
J J's in the mail.
Let that be reflected in the minutes, JJ. But we do, we do appreciate Dr. Enfield joining us. So thank you so much. Okay, so no further discussion on the motion again to approve consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.25 and 2.27 through 2.33. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition?
Nay.
Okay, the motion carries. Let the record show it, it's six to one. Also want to acknowledge that our student trustee has joined us. I know it's the end of the semester, and you're doing everything so much, but thank you. Glad to see you here, and we're running out of time. We're running out of time with you, so thank you so much. Okay, so consent agenda item 2.26, Trustee Church?
Thank you very much. So 2.26 basically is a reappointment to the share committee, advisory committee of certain individuals. Some of them have been on since 2019. I guess my question for staff, did this go out for public applications, or did we simply make the appointments, reappointments?
Thank you for the question, Trustee Church. It did not go out to the public. These members of the share committee are in good standing, and they wanted to continue in their role. So based on Policy 9100, it was decided to reappoint them.
And I'll just go on the record as saying I'm opposed to that. We have essentially four trustees that didn't vote on one of the appointments, and three or more, I think, three or so that didn't vote on the other one. I just think it's a bad procedure. The share committee is extremely important. It's extremely controversial. And I think that it warrants going out to the community for application and public input on who's going to be on that committee. And so I'm definitely opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Did you have any other questions that you wanted to ask at this time on that? Okay. Okay, seeing no other questions, we've already done public comment as a whole, so looking for the pleasure of the board to approve consent agenda item 2.26, which is the re, in statement, the reappointment of several members of the, of the share committee, which is in alignment with, with board policy. Is there a motion? Oh, yes. Trustee Smith, there's a motion. Trustee Rodriguez, there is a second. Any discussion? One thing I will say is, is the one, board policy, you mentioned the number, what is it? 9100. That's it, thank you. When that policy was put in place, it was to acknowledge those board, those community members that are serving, serving, and are serving good standing, meaning they're attending meetings, they're showing up, they're, they're involved in the conversations. And certainly, there, there will always be board members, because board members change. So there will always be board members that haven't had an opportunity to weigh in on a particular appointment. But it really was more leaning towards honoring the service for those members of the community who have been serving in good standing. So that was the rationale behind that. Trustee Smith?
Thanks, President Taylor. It's probably worth mentioning why I'm supportive of this. During my three years as the chair of the zoning advisory committee, I have a more intimate understanding than, than many about the rigorousness that we evaluate our committee members. I also know that committee members are not always invited back, or they also serve at the pleasure of the trustees. So I know from working with the district staff liaison, other district staff, the committee members themselves, and also, of course, listening to the trustees, that the opportunity to continue on in your service on a committee is something that is rigorously considered before it's actually advanced to this part. And again, I know that, because I lived that for multiple years.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. I think that's a good distinction, because in my time on the board, there have been times when there are a couple of committees that, that we actually appoint for, based upon a statute or, or policy. And there have been more than one occasion when someone who was appointed for District E, which I proudly serve, when they haven't been a committee member in good standing. And we have thanked them for their service and found someone else to appoint. So I'm glad you mentioned that, because I think that is important to note. I think it's important to note. We're always certainly grateful for those community members who step up to serve, especially on this committee, because this one can be controversial, as Trustee Church said. Okay, seeing no further discussion, there is a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition?
Nay.
Thank you. Let the record show that the motion passes six to one. It is six to one. Thank you, staff. And please, 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 give, I assume no committee members are here. We have acknowledged, we want to, none of her.
Ashley was online.
Okay, well, hopefully she's still following on Zoom. Please thank them for their service. We do appreciate that. The share committee is busy and doing work right now, so certainly we appreciate that. Okay, we're going to go further on the agenda then. This is our, these are budget items, budget items for us. This is our, actually, our, our public meeting, I should say. First, let me introduce the agenda item. Agenda item 3.01, Presentation, Discussion, and Public Hearing on the Fiscal Year 2223 Tentative Budget for All District Funds. This is consideration of possible action, possible direction to the superintendent and staff, and possible action to approve the fiscal year 2223 final budget. And again, this is for possible action. And before us is our CFO, Mr. Mathers, and our budget director, Mr. Bazo. Before us, so this will be the time to open our public meeting. Based upon statutes, it's required, we're required to have a public meeting on the tentative budget. And so as we jump into this, let's have our presentation, then we'll call for public comment.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Madam President, trustees. So we are at the finish line in terms of the preparation of the fiscal year 2223 budget, operating budget for Washoe County School District. So we made it. As, as you just said, Madam President, we need to conduct a public hearing where the public can provide comment on the tentative budget. That's the way the law reads. They obviously could provide comment on the final budget if they wanted to as well. But we need to do that, and then close the public hearing. And for the actual final budget, Jeff will go through in detail a number of schedules. We'll talk about one minor change to the superintendent's recommendation for our general fund budget. Then we'll go over other funds, one of which does have a number of changes as well. And certainly, if the board had any changes, we could consider those, but, you know, they would have to be fairly minor at this point. Any major changes would be difficult to incorporate by June 8th, which is our filing deadline with the Department of Taxation. So at this meeting, we are asking after closing the public hearing for approval of the final budget. So we've got a lot of summary information on the general fund budget and other funds, as you can see, and Jeff's going to go through those fairly quickly. But certainly, along the way, if you have questions, we're here to answer them. So with that, I will turn it over to Jeff.
Thanks, Mark. For the record, Jeff Bazo, Budget Director. So I'll start off with a general fund update. A lot of these slides are going to look very familiar. We've had them in several presentations, but I'll go through the highlights of them. So this first one here is the general fund priorities. Almost exactly the same as from the last time we met, where the first priority of the general fund budget is the critical labor shortage compensation adjustments. The second priority are some of the items you heard at the last meeting, such as the creation of police recruit positions and some social worker positions as well. And then we had some additional costs for, I think there was a recruitment budget, some school nurses, and a bus driver trainer position. We do have a new item here, which we'll go over in a couple slides, and that's for the funding of a halftime grant coordinator. But again, we'll get there in a couple slides. So this general fund budget summary slide here, these are some of the highlights of the budget. So first, our per people increase, our per people amount increased by only 1.3%. And as you've heard before, that's less than our step increases in cost of living adjustments. Fortunately, we've had higher indirect cost revenue because of the level of federal stimulus funding we've received and higher-than-expected turnover savings that help put us in a balanced budget situation. Our budget also includes a $1,500 COVID differential for our Washoe Education Association employees. It's about $6.3 million. And then we've also incorporated previous direction about the critical labor compensation adjustments into this budget. So one change we have, the one minor change we have for the general fund for the final budget, is the continuation of funding for a halftime grant coordinator position. We added this in FY '22 in the December amended budget, because we were seeing increased indirect cost revenue based on more, more grants that we were applying for. So we'd like to continue the funding for this position for FY '23 to apply for more one-time grants, since we're seeing a higher level of one-time grants that we can apply for. And the approximate cost of that is just over $50,000.
Mr. Bazo, if I may, that $50,000, does that include benefits package and so on, or?
Yeah, that's the full, full salary and benefits costs, and then half of that, because it's just the half FTE for the position.
Right, I just wanted to make sure it was, it was on the record that this is, it's isn't a $100,000 a year salary position.
Correct.
But that this includes the benefits, the whole package, because otherwise, it looks like, it looks like that, so.
That's correct. Are there any other questions on this slide? All right, so I will move on to a lot of summary slides. Again, a lot of these you've seen before, so I'll just touch on the highlights, but please stop me if you have any questions. So first, our general fund revenues are $532 million. Over 98% of that is state-funded. This next slide shows our general fund expenditures, broken out on a, what we call a functional basis. We're required to report our budget on a functional basis, so this is reflective of that. This is a, just a narrative of that, but a lot, most of our, our general fund expenditures go to directly support our school sites. And here's a slide we've seen before. This is our expenditures on a per people basis, and more than three-quarters of our general fund expenditures are going to direct school support. Next, we're breaking down the general fund expenditures by type. As you can see here, over 91% of our general fund budget goes directly to staff salary and benefit costs. On this next slide, we're breaking down those salary and benefit costs into different categories. So majority of that is our certified and classified employee salaries. But then we have other salaries, like coaches, substitutes, other categories. We have, you know, over $46 million in health insurance costs, and over $87 million in retirement costs as well.
Yes, please. Clerk Minetta?
Thank you, Madam President. Can you explain to me what the retirement money is? Where, where, what is it?
Yes, thank you for your question, Clerk Minetta. So the, the retirement costs are the pers contribution. So we pay a percentage, either 15.5% or 29.75% on employee salaries to pers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Clarify.
Trustee Church?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, everybody.
That's no, go ahead, go ahead.
Can you clarify that for public?
Yes, thank you for your question, Trustee Church. Public safety, I think, is at 44%.
Okay, please go ahead.
So this next slide here summarizes our general fund FTEs or full-time equivalencies, again, on a functional basis. So these aren't just the total number of positions we have, but if you convert them to a full-time equivalency, so if you have two halftime positions, they would show up as one here. But this is, you know, we report a lot of things on FTE, so that's what this is showing here. The next slide is FTE data by position type, and as you can see, most of our positions are teachers. That's, that's what our district does. So I think it's 57% of the FTEs here are for teacher positions. This next slide shows our budget per people expenditures on a school level. So elementary is a little bit higher than other school levels, because we have state requirements on lower class sizes, and then kindergarten through third grade. And then our other schools include some of our option schools or smaller schools. They have a different, you know, non-traditional setup, so they're going to have a different cost structure, and they're a little bit higher than our middle and high schools as well.
Want to jump in right in, Trustee Church?
Can we go back one slide? You moved ahead, there we are. Of the teachers, 2,662, 2,662, how many are actually in the classroom teaching?
So if we go back to the previous slide, this top left number here are licensed employees that are, are teachers in the instructional category. That would, there'd be 2,605 FTEs in the classroom, just in the general fund.
So I just want to make sure I understand, roughly 2,605 of those, so the vast, vast majority are actually teaching in the classroom?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that's just of those funded out of the general fund. So you know, we have, we have more teachers than that, but that's just of those funded out of the general fund.
Okay, this next slide here is just a summary of Attachment C that had the general fund budgets by chief and department. So this is just a, again, a summary of the total FTEs and expenditures. And as you can see on that fourth row, a majority of our costs and FTEs are at the school level. So that brings us to our general fund sources and uses summary. As you can see here, our total ongoing sources equal our ongoing uses, meaning we have a structurally balanced budget. But in FY '23, we do have some one-time savings in textbooks and one-time uses for that COVID differential I mentioned before. And then the budget request for that halftime grant coordinator position, those net to a, her net cost of $3.2 million, which would be a one-time use of our, our general fund fund balance. So I'll hand it back to our CFO, Mark Mathers, to go over some other parts of our general fund budget.
Thanks, Jeff. So I did want to kind of cover, because this can be confusing, and you may hear different things said about our budget, so I wanted to have a slide devoted to kind of the question about, well, if we're drawing on $3 million out of our general fund fund balance or cash reserves, how can you say the general fund is balanced? And so we go back to the definition in our board policy or at the Government Finance Officers Association that talks about what is a structurally balanced budget. And it means that a structurally balanced budget is one in which recurring, ongoing revenues equal or exceed, or at least equal to or exceeding recurring expenditures. So what this policy tries to get to, and what the GFOA talks about, is that you wouldn't use one-time monies for ongoing costs, right? So you wouldn't, whatever that is, that would be inappropriate. You'd eventually run out of the one-time monies, and then you'd find yourself in a deficit. However, it's totally appropriate to use one-time monies for one-time costs, which is what we're doing. So as Jeff noted, there is actually the second year of two years of differentials that are going to certified staff. The total cost of that is $6 million. And again, roughly half of that we're covering out of fund balance. The other half we're coming, covering out of savings within the general fund. So by our own definition, by the GFOA definition, our recurring revenues are more than equal to our recurring costs. And so we're paying for this one-time cost that ends in fiscal year '23, partly out of fund balance. So that's how we can say we have a structurally balanced budget. It's a fourth straight year of having a balanced budget. So I hope that wasn't too technical for you all, but I wanted to kind of cover that, because, again, someone looking at the bottom line owners may not understand that. So we wanted to have a slide just to document this is a balanced budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mathers, for taking us through that. And I see, Trustee Church, I'm going to just throw this question in. GFOA, will you just say what that is for the, for the public?
Yes, thank you. It's the Government Finance Officers Association. It's basically finance officials like myself and Jeff of all governments in the United States and Canada. So it's a professional association, and they provide policy guidance and guidance on practices that most every local government follows and uses. So that's the reference.
Thank you, Mr. Mathers. Trustee Church?
Thank you. And I apologize again for butting into that last one. The next slide you have ties into this, it lists a 12% fund balance target. Are we on schedule to meet that, and am I correct? That's a good thing. I mean, that, that speaks highly of your hard work on, but that top right says fund balance target is 12%?
That's right. And really, thank you for the question, Trustee Church. I appreciate it. It's really a reflection of the board's and staff's hard work. It's not, you know, we build budgets, we're kind of the point people here in the business office, but it's a collective effort, for sure. And we have needed the board's support to make some tough decisions to get to a balanced budget and to get to a 12% fund balance, for sure. So you all deserve the credit just as much as anyone. But just to go through the numbers on this chart, so you're correct, Trustee Church, the board recently adopted a fund balance target of 12%. And we do measure that on an actual basis. So you can see in fiscal year '21, we were basically right at 12% when you look at actual cash or reserves of $58,217,660 versus actual expenditures. For the current year, fiscal year '22, we would drop down to 10.8% if we, if we spent our whole entire budget, didn't have any savings, and we realized revenues at our budget. So because we had carryover encumbrances that needed funding from the prior year, we actually would dip down. The reality is, if we have any kind of savings, that'll help us keep at 12% or so. And it would be my hope that we do see some savings, so that we're, again, around the 12%. But at this point in the fiscal year, all we can safely say and budget for is, you know, our expenditures equal budget, and our revenues equal budget. And in that scenario, like I say, we'd be a little bit under 11% fund balance. And then, and then, again, because of the one-time use of $3 million to help cover the $6 million in differentials for teachers, we would further drop to 10%. But again, this is based on having no savings at all, which, you know, is normally not the case, given we have a $4 million contingency account. So I'm hopeful that we will continue to hover around the 12% fund balance target, and that is, relatively speaking, a very solid fund balance target. It's not quite as high as what the GFOA recommends, which is two months of expenses, which is 16.6%. So we're pre- sixteen point six percent. So we're pretty far away from that, which I'll show you on the next slide. But it is higher than where we've been. It is higher than some other school districts, like Clark County School District, that's just above four percent. And I've seen some budget presentations from other districts around here that are now below four percent. That would put them on fiscal watch. And they'd be monitored by a state committee and would have to develop a plan to get out, to, to increase their fund balance. So we're certainly much better off than that, and I think this is a prudent level of reserves, given, again, the lack of a guarantee now in the people-centered funding plan. If there is a recession, we could see our funding cut mid-year by the state conceivably. So we need to have enough cash to kind of buffer through, you know, a recession scenario, just a flat, flat revenue scenario, which we had as recently as 2020. So I hope that answers your questions.
Please go ahead.
So basically, ten, ten point eight percent. However, if there's savings, if there's projects that don't go forward, that could easily move it up, but we just have to project.
That's right.
And then, the, kind of an important question I'm confused on. On the last budget meetings we had versus today, are we seeing changes? If I understand right, we're, we are seeing some changes in the funding for critical labor shortage. Is that a change from last time?
No, I think in April, we had already had our board meeting to talk about critical labor compensation adjustments, and we have funded at least what we knew at the time the cost, you know, roughly to be. But of course, this is all pending labor negotiations and further analysis we're doing, which we'll talk about in the next agenda item today. But it does account for at least some of those critical labor compensation adjustments. So that is built, that was built into the April budget and built into today's version of the final budget. Good questions.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Other questions?
I guess I should do the math, too. I should explain the math. So when we talk about a fund balance percentage, basically, all we're doing is taking our fund balance or reserves and dividing it through by expenditures and transfers out. So it's a real simple formula, but it's not, I always forget that it's not something people do every day, unlike us that do it every day. So.
Nope. Dr. Nicolet?
Well, I may do it, but it has a lot less zeros.
Yes. You wouldn't, he'd be here.
Right. So to just ask what I'm hoping is a straightforward question, because I looked through the three hundred and fifty-seven pages, and it's very complex. And oh, my gosh, thank you for all of that. And I know it's not a solo endeavor, and thank everyone for all that. So moving forward, I guess, piggybacking on Trustee Church's concept is, we will continue to hire employees because we need them in, in all areas. And is there a threshold to where you've identified that we can't hire anymore? I mean, I hope we get to that point. Oh, my gosh, we have all the teachers, all the, everyone we need. Is there a threshold that you've identified?
To try to answer it in the most straightforward way, I don't think, no, I don't think we would ever, unless revenues dropped, right? Unless our resources dropped, I would hope we would never reach a point where we had a hiring freeze. We want to be able to fill all of our positions. And, and so our contra that we have for vacancy savings is roughly equal to our contingency account. So if need be, we draw upon the contingency account to kind of cover the projected savings in the budget. So I would hope I would never have to advise the superintendent, no, we can't fill that vacant position. We want to fill every position budgeted in our budget. Yeah.
Thank you, Vice President Nicolet. Okay, please, go ahead.
So last slide, slide on fund balance, I think, I promise, something like that. But we did want to kind of, going along the lines of Trustee Church's questions, kind of show you, you know, where we're at, how we compare, kind of best practices and so forth. So again, what we're projecting is a fund balance at the end of this fiscal year, June thirtieth, of ten point eight percent or fifty-six point nine million. And then that would drop down, because, again, we're using three million or so for those certified COVID differentials, down to fifty-three point seven million or ten percent. So we're still in double digits. A twelve percent fund balance would be sixty-four million, based on budgeted expenditures and transfers out. So we could have savings of roughly ten point five million and still be under the twelve percent fund balance. So, right, only if we saw savings of more than ten and a half million would we be above twelve percent. And then the far-right bar shows what a sixteen point six percent fund balance would be. That's eighty-eight point nine million. So we're really far away from that. But that is what GFOA recommends an agency, kind of barring any other kind of specific circumstances to that agency, should have. That represents two months of expenditures or, or revenues. And it's also the point at which the State Department of Education would sweep our fund balance. So anything over sixteen point six now pursuant to the new people-centered funding plan would be swept away into the state education fund stabilization account. But we're, like I say, pretty far away from that. That would be a nice problem to have, but we're nowhere close to having that problem.
Right. Just let's not have that, though.
Right.
Okay, we'll move on to other funds, starting off with our special revenue funds. This is where we have our grant funds, our weighted funding categories, our ESSER funds, special education. We don't have any changes to this since the April twenty-sixth work session, so there's no questions. I'll move on to the, the next slide. These are our internal service funds. Again, no changes from the April twenty-sixth work session, but I would like to, to highlight that we don't anticipate any health insurance or workers' compensation rate adjustments in FY twenty-three. Next, we have our capital projects funds. These numbers have been updated to include the four positions that were included in that April twenty-sixth work session. And then, in a later slide I'll go over, but we'll come back with a amended capital improvement plan that'll include those positions. Again, no changes to our debt service funds. So that'll bring us to our enterprise fund. This is the nutrition services fund. We do have changes to this fund. So we worked with the nutrition services department to, to pin down a budget for next year. Things that this include are the compensation adjustments that we've, we've discussed at prior meetings, capital outlay and capital projects to help spend down some of the, the position of that fund, and then also universal free meals for FY twenty-three that the, the state has promised us. We also have a, on the next slide, a request for an account clerk position in this fund. So this position was reduced in the fall of 2020, so fiscal year twenty-one, when we had our nutrition services reduction in force. However, we have more students back in school than we, we did at that time, and there is a, a need identified by the nutrition and services department to bring back that position to better serve schools and, and coordinate meals with all the schools. And the cost for that position, total salary and benefit package, is sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars.
If, if I may, Mr. Basel, now, part of, was that just in my mind, anyway, so this, see if I'm making this up in my own head, because we've had free lunch for everyone for the past couple of school years, and that's really been helpful for the nutrition services fund in terms of generating more revenue and them being able to do things like this and so on. Am I correct in that? Because they get that reimbursement?
Yes, we get a higher reimbursement rate from the universal free meal program than we do under the national school lunch program. So yes, we've done, you know, the, the fund has turned it around and has had surpluses.
Okay, so it's back to being solid and so on. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So this, this next slide is just a summary of our budget appropriations by fund type. If we go to the bottom right-hand number, you can see that our, our total, total budget for FY twenty-three is just over one billion dollars, with more than half of that, five hundred and thirty-five million dollars coming from the general fund. This next slide here is a, a summary of FTEs across all of our different fund types. Once again, we'll see here more teachers than any other position type. And the, the red bar there now includes other funds, so special revenue funds. All of our different grants are included in there So before we, we wrap up, I'm going to hand it back to Mark to go over some of our FY twenty-three budget highlights.
Okay, so again, another scintillating presentation, probably, from your business office. But I, I did want to step back and, and talk about what this fiscal year twenty-three budget accomplishes. You've heard a number of times, the limited funding increases we're receiving from the state, just over one percent. And yet, you know, I, I want to give kudos to you and the leadership team and departments who've helped build this budget, because there are really good things we're doing in this budget. Do we wish we could do more? Sure, absolutely. We wish we could do more. But I think it's important just to step back and, and summarize for you what this budget includes. And that includes step increases for all bargaining units. It includes cost of living adjustments that you see here of all the bargaining units that we've settled for. There's one still kind of hanging out. But, you know, we did manage to carve out and create funding for at least some level of COLA. Is it enough to offset rising inflation right now? No, absolutely not. But this is what we could do with that one point three percent increase from the state. So employees will receive another step increase, which is, you know, between two and three percent typically, and then the COLA. And then we did fund, continue to fund in fiscal year twenty-three, you know, differentials or stipends, depending on the collective bargaining agreement, of fifteen hundred dollars per member for certified staff, WEA, school administrators, and the leadership team. And we're still working through a couple of agreements still for that. And, and, you know, they could see stipends or differentials as well, depending on how negotiations go. And then we did provide some additional one-time cash outs. So these increased the number of days employees could cash out vacation or sick leave. And so again, we continue to kind of work through that with a couple of associations. And that's in recognition of the fact, again, during COVID, people couldn't take vacation or work through their sick leave, probably more than they ever had before, to continue to provide coverage at school. So it's a, a reflection, a recognition, and an appreciation to, to those groups for doing that. So now they'll, they'll be able to cash out more days in fiscal year twenty-three. And then, as we've talked about, we've tried to carve out some money for critical labor shortage compensation increases, which we know is the first priority of the board and, and something we need to do to get ready for next school year. So we're continuing to work with human resources and our chief of operations and other areas to accomplish that, which, again, you'll hear at the next agenda item. So as we've said before, but I think it's worth mentioning, this is the fourth straight structurally balanced general fund, fund budget in a row. We want to keep that streak going, so we'll see how the legislative session goes in 2023, and, and that will continue to be our goal per board policy. We've also, we're also opening one new high school next school year. The Swoop expansion will be completed, as will the totally redone O'Brien Middle School. And so, you know, it's a proud accomplishment, and, and this budget kind of encompasses all the additional funding that goes along with that. Not that this is a, a minimal item, for sure, but ESSER funding continues to be a big part of our budget and efforts. And Joe Ernst and gang are kind of managing that. But you can kind of see what we've budgeted so far in fiscal year twenty-three. So again, that'll be a major effort of the district to provide additional supports to our students and do a whole bunch of other things with that funding as well. In our capital improvement plan, and, and, you know, just so you know, the first year of the CIP is always part of our operating budget. We'll be pursuing remodel of Debbie Smith CTE Academy. We've talked before about the modernization study. That'll be happening in twenty-three. And then we've upped our capital renewal program. This is the program. We make just various upgrades to our existing schools. We've upped that amount to forty million dollars in fiscal twenty-three. And that's, you know, that's a sizable amount. That's many, many projects at many, many schools. As you heard from Jeff, we will also be offering free meals based on indications from the state that they will help fund that. So that's a good thing, that students will continue to not have to pay for meals for either breakfast or lunch, no matter what their income levels. And we won't have to go into the whole debt arrears issue. And then lastly, you know, our internal service funds, our property and casualty fund, our workers' comp funds, these funds provide insurance for, you know, kind of those situations. Will be funded at an actuarially sound level. So unlike some other agencies, we're in good shape there. And we've funded, you know, pending claims and, and an actuarial assumption about future claims. So that's really good to know, that we've covered those kind of liabilities. So I think, you know, it's not a victory lap necessarily, but I think it's, again, important to acknowledge, you know, everything that this budget does. Again, would we like to do more? Absolutely. And, and hopefully, that will happen with the session coming soon and, and hoped, hoped improvement to funding of K through twelve. So, thank you.
So we'll, we'll wrap up the presentation with the, the rest of the FY twenty-three budget timeline. So even though the final budget represents the, the finish line for the spring, we will be back in, in a few different ways. So first, the four-year financial plan. We've been working on that this spring. We'll be able to shift our, our focus over to that and, and spend, spend more time on that and come back, present that to you when, when that's been completed. As I mentioned earlier, we'll have revisions of the capital improvement plan. And then we'll have the, the December amended budget, like we do every year. By January first, we have to adjust our, our general fund budget by our first quarter average daily enrollment. So we will be back to do that no later than the December thirteenth board meeting. And then we'll start prepping for the next legislative session, the FY twenty-four budget. So I guess before we wrap that up, I just want to say thank you again to all of you, our chiefs, our department managers for their hard work. And last but not least, the rest of the budget staff who spent countless hours putting together reports, documents, other materials during the process. So that'll bring us to the end of the presentation.
Okay. Why don't we do this? We've had questions along the way. Why don't we take public comment, then we can bring it back to see if there are more questions from the board before we close the, the public hearing?
I have no public comments.
Okay, no public comment on this. Trustee Smith? I've been Trustee Rodriguez.
Thank you, President Taylor. So first, the congratulations. Four years of a structurally sound budget is phenomenal. I was a parent in district when that wasn't the case. And so it's an incredibly proud moment for us all, the hours and the team for putting this together. There's, there's just no words. So my question is more so requesting an update. It connects to the one point three percent that we're getting additionally from the state. And we also touched very briefly that we're going to be looking at a four-year financial plan. So something we've talked about in these meetings a few times are our efforts with the commission to get them to reconsider the county per pupil funding. And I was just curious if there were any updates on that. Of course, want to keep it to this topic, but we've talked about it along the way. When we look at that one point three percent, just kind of curious where that is, if maybe I, you know, need to hang out there at a future meeting.
Yes, so the, the update on the Nevada Cost of Education Index or Comparable Wage Index, as we continue to lobby for work to be done on that, the superintendent and myself have a meeting tomorrow in Carson City with the Department of Education to get an update. My hope is that that index is recalculated, certainly in time for the legislative session, but I would hope by September, when the last Commission on School Funding meeting of the year is. So we will push on that and see where that all goes and certainly report back to you. And then in terms of the session itself, again, yeah, I think we're looking for any and all assistance in pushing the legislature and the governor to fund K through twelve at a, at a greater, higher level. And that would be our expectation. So we will keep you apprised, certainly, as we see the governor's recommended budget in January, you know, what that looks like, because that'll- you know, what that looks like, because that'll give us a sense in totality of the increase to K through 12 funding. But as you say, you know, we're focused on Washoe, of course. And so we're continuing to work on that issue and hope that there's progress. And also, thank you for the donuts a couple of months ago. That words can't cover it, but donuts go a long way.
Because, of course, and I'm always a fan of that. So because the commission just met last Friday, of course, I always want to keep it to the agenda topic, but I would very much like to understand the role that our voice can have. I know we've been asking very nicely for a period of time. And so I'm just curious, like, when they will really take this up. And I very much want more funding, K through 12 with the state, absolutely, absolutely want that. However, I'm going to be really clear and on the record here, that even with more funding, if Washoe is computed in that formula as receiving the least based on a fundamentally flawed formula, that's still not getting us where we need to be. And all I'm asking for from the state is a fair and accurate estimation of the cost of living here, which I believe all the other counties were offered. So I'll just leave that right there, but I just want it to be really clear on the record that we definitely need to address that, because even if the state does get more money, if Washoe is still receiving the very least based on a flawed formula, that's still not the success point we want to get to.
Thank you, I agree 100% with your well-stated remarks. I should have mentioned that at the commission meeting on Friday, I did ask for an agenda item on this topic at our next meeting in June. So that will happen. I'm told that was what we needed to do to get it agendized. So it'll be on the agenda, and we'll update you with what we know in terms of what will be said in June.
Thank you very much. I'm more than happy to be pleasantly persistent with this.
If I may jump in just so I can follow up, trustee Rodriguez, if I may. Correct me if I'm wrong, didn't, like, a subcommittee vote to take another look at this formula?
Actually, the whole commission in a motion in February
The whole commission, okay.
voted to direct the Department of Education to recalculate the index using unemployment information, wage information from our unemployment office, DEADER. Whereas before, the calculation was based on a sampling, based on the American Community Survey. So they took an action to recalculate it.
So it wasn't the committee, it was the full commission?
It was the full commission. So we have been waiting to see the results of those calculations, so... But hopefully, we'll learn more tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Thank you for letting me jump in, that was connected.
Thank you, ladies. And, you know, trustee Smith, I plan to be there next to you while I'm really advocating for our funding. My question is going to be a little bit simpler, or more simple. And maybe just because, you know, I'm still, you know, a freshman in all this. If we want to look at creating more positions, more particular, our school police, especially in light of everything that's going on in our nation. If we want to expand that, how would we go about doing that? Do we have to go, is that general funded through the state? Or how would we go about increasing positions?
Yeah, those are general fund positions. There was a state grant that was going to provide for additional police officers. But then, when COVID hit in a special session, that funding was eliminated. So they are general fund positions, so they are subject to just the level of funding we receive from the state. And so if we saw increased funding, school police officers would certainly be an area that we could look at and that you, the board, could make decisions on. But they are general funded.
So basically, we had to go to state to see about trying to get that back or growing our police department?
Certainly, that's an area I think, you know, anyone would be allowed to lobby on, right? And ask for increased funding in 2023, absolutely.
All right, and thank you for you guys' work also, appreciate you.
Thank you. Is that a follow-up to this? Okay, yes, please. And then we'll go to you, trustee Church, has to follow up, thank you.
Thank you, as a follow-up to trustee Rodriguez, our new grants writer, and of course, we have a phenomenal grants team. I assume that they're always looking, or could possibly also look for where there might be grants to fund school protection, like our school police.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm sure if we saw a grant like that, or, and even if we didn't, the grants team is always kind of doing the reconnaissance of what grants are out there. I guess just to step back again, we go back to the fact that funding on a per pupil basis went up 1.3%. So that's, again, as we've said several times, not to beat a dead horse, but that's not even enough to cover compensation increases for our existing employees. And so that's the reason why we couldn't consider additional positions, because we didn't even receive enough money to cover step increases for our employees. So, like you say, the hope is that we might have a year where we saw K through 12 funding go up more than inflation, and we might have some additional funding to consider new positions. Let's pray and hope for that in 2023, I guess.
Or at least, if we can get the formula looked at again, it could free up some dollars while we wait for the overall. I mean, they're really kind of like a two, we have two fronts on this fight, if you will. Trustee Church, and then trustee Mayberry?
Excuse me, thank you very much. Yeah, I do have a lot of comments to make. I'd love to see us discuss the funding for police, and I've asked for that before, and I continue to ask that we put that on the agenda as a separate item. But getting back specifically to the budget, number one, the per pupil funding spending, I just want to ditto what's already been said, definitely hope we can address that. The current proposal is essentially a pay cut for staff. I mean, it no way keeps up with inflation, and it's not... I think the fact that the different unions, associations accepted it, in my opinion, maybe represents they realized that we can't increase taxes, we can't, you know, create funding where it's not there. And so I'm definitely on board to look at the per pupil funding, but I am totally opposed to advocating as a board underfunding for any new taxes. Totally opposed to that. I'm a bit troubled by the 12% balance going down to 10.8. You know, I just hate to see money dipping into that reserve rainy day fund, but I get it. And that kind of brings back to the one number, major question, or major comment. This is not the budget that I would propose. This is not how I would allocate the budget. Although, if we went around the dais, every one of us would have a different opinion. You know, "Oh, I want more money for this, I want more money for that, I want more police, but I want less," you know, whatever. But I'd want to be a team player, and I realize that would be gridlock if all seven of us had seven different opinions and we didn't give in. So I'm inclined to vote yes, but, again, putting on the record, it's not exactly how I would do it. The money for the critical labor shortage is almost a poison pill for me, but it's not. But it almost is, because I don't think that's the best way to address the critical labor shortage. I've said it over and over, so I'm not going to beat a dead horse. But we need more bus drivers, more teachers, more et cetera. And I don't think that we're going to be able to spend our way out of that problem. Now, for the record too, for the public that's watching, I think it's fascinating that we had no public comment. I think it's fascinating, because it's a complicated issue. You know, when we talk about bus drivers or share, you know, the room fills up and the emails come in, and here we had no public comment. And the reason I bring that up, I would like to see, for purposes of the budget, that we return to having a financial advisory board committee, or financial advisory committee, like we used to. The one we had was unwieldy, if that's the right word, it was too many members. But I personally would love to see seven members, one appointed each by the trustees, to kind of provide that expertise oversight. And in my opinion, that would morph into the audit committee, so they would not be an extra committee, it would just be a change. Kind of wrapping up, the one funding that I think is wonderful and that we get a lot of flack for, and people don't realize it, is we go way, way above our mental health funding. We are very concerned as trustees, I think I can speak for that, at least on my side, but I think you can see it in the budget. We have social workers, counselors, nurses, psychologists, and support staff. So I do think we need kudos for the hard work we do for the mental health, and a lot of people don't know that. And so I want to put that on the record, that we're not defunding that. We are on top of that, and we care deeply about our students and their mental health. The other thing for the record, this is not easily changed. The reason we're here today is because it's set by statute. It's not something, okay, you know, three months from now, we're going to move $10 million from here to there. That said, there is some ways to save money that doesn't have to be spent just because it's allocated. And of course, we have a new correction, an incoming superintendent who may have different ideas on allocating that within the Nevada revised statute. So I guess that's just my comments on it. I commend you for the hard work, I think it's overall an excellent budget. Again, not exactly how I would do it, but we can't have seven different budgets. So I'm on board on that, and I just appreciate the time of the other trustees and the community and listening to my comments.
Thank you, trustee Church. Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, gentlemen. I got a question on the ESTER funding. ESTER I and II, is there, could there be opportunities to reallocate or commit some of those funds in other areas in the months to come? Should there be a higher priority?
We can do grant revisions, but they do have to be approved by the Department of Education.
Madam Superintendent, I think she's going to add in.
Thank you very much. So we can do budget amendments, but it's important to know that ESTER's I and ESTER's II have already been allocated, and most of that is within positions. So that's not easily reallocated with positions in place right now. ESTER III may be a little bit more flexible, and I know that Joe and his team are working on that as far as budget revisions and if those are necessary.
I think, and I think that's sort of where, what I was, the thrust of what I was getting at there was any flexibility, should we need to go that route. Secondly, you talked, congratulations on the structured, structural budget. But let me ask you this, is there, I don't mean to poke an eye in other school districts, are there other school districts in the state that aren't in the same position we are in terms of a structural budget?
That's correct. I guess if it makes us feel better, there are districts who are in a hold harmless situation. So when we converted from the Nevada plan to the people-centered funding plan, their funding has been frozen. And so they get a 0% funding increase because they're receiving more than what the people-centered funding plan would indicate they should. So again, we're converting from one older funding scheme that had been in existence for more than 50 years to a new funding scheme. And when you do that, there's always winners and losers. And the approach to kind of lessen the pain for those districts was just to hold their funding flat until total funding statewide kind of, you know, raised all boats. And their allocated calculated funding got above where they're at today. But until that happens, they actually have no increases to their general fund, per pupil funding. And so that's very tough, as you can imagine. And there's at least one district, yeah, that I believe is now showing in their final budget a fund balance below 4%. And it's a very difficult situation for some of our rural school districts who are in that hold harmless situation. So, yeah, that is happening.
Please, go right ahead.
I'm looking at the budget, can you just help us understand some of the special revenue funds? I see a number of private schools.
I'm sorry, what? Trustee Mayberry, where exactly are you looking at?
Yeah, I'm looking at the...
Attachment C?
Yeah, this is...
Not the presentation.
This is attachment C, my apologies. Yeah, I was, I'm sorry. I had some extra time, so I looked at the numbers.
So thank you for your question, so...
What page now, trustee Mayberry?
Say, let's start on page 26, 27, I mean, I'm looking at...
Does everyone know where we are?
Excel Christian, Little Flower, Our Lady...
Trustee Mayberry, I'm going to pause you just for a minute, so we can catch our colleagues up. Go to attachment C, so it isn't in the presentation, go to attachment C. And then we're going to page 26, trustee Mayberry?
Yes.
Okay, so everyone can follow, everyone's there?
I apologize.
That's why I'm here. Good thing I showed up today.
It's a little hot in this weather.
Okay, please, go right ahead with your question. We're on page 26, please. If you would mind going again, so that now that we're all literally on the same page.
Yeah, so the question is, as we look at our special revenue sources, I just, you can give us a deeper dive into some of these line items, Little Flower, Our Lady, Snow, so on. I mean, these are not in the public school system, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, so some grants do require that we flow funds through to private schools in the county. And so that's what these amounts represent. I don't know the grants off the top of my head or have that detail in front of me, but that's why they show up there.
Trustee Mayberry, so typically, we have to have flow-through funding for our private schools, depending on the students that live in the zone, that they're zoned for. And we had discussed this earlier.
This is Title I money.
It could be Title I, or it could be Title II for around professional learning.
Right, okay.
So federal dollars.
Got it, thank you.
Kind of a pass through. Other questions, trustee Mayberry?
The only other question I had, you know, Mark, you're a lot closer to the economic climate than we are. What are you, what's your sense about the future of the inflationary climate that we're experiencing? Is it going to get better or worse? This is MSNBC right now.
This is on the record, I was going to say, this is on the record.
Yeah, it's, I mean, so the debate in the markets right now are how hard and how fast will the Fed raise interest rates in their attempts to quell inflation? And will they be able to achieve a soft landing, i.e. get the economy to simmer down a bit and without going into recession versus a hard landing where they would raise rates such that we would enter into a recession? So we see in the stock market, we're already in correction territory, if not a bear market. So you're kind of seeing some of the reaction of the markets to the possibility of a recession. You know, it's like, you talk to an economist, you're on the one hand this, but on the other hand that. It's anybody's guess, and it just depends on so many factors, not just monetary policy, but we have a war in Ukraine, and that's affected gas prices, right? And we continue to see those rising, and that is going to lead to lower discretionary dollars that a household has to spend. On the other hand, the US consumer's hanging in there, and we're not seeing a decline in consumer spending yet. They saved a lot of money over the last two years, if you can believe that. But savings levels went way up since COVID started. So, yeah, it is crystal ball territory, no one knows for sure where it kind of will end up. And then part of inflation is supply chain issues. And part of inflation is just, there's not enough chips to go around to put in cars. And so there's, it's a supply and demand issue, right? Where if you want to buy a new car, you have to pay above MSRP now versus you never used to do that, right? So, and that has nothing to do really with monetary policy. So it's a really complicated situation and kind of unprecedented in many ways. And the Fed's going to raise interest rates, they've telegraphed that very clearly. So I think the cheap money will be, there won't be any of the cheap money like there was a year or two ago, right? Your mortgage rates will be going up, financing rates will be going up. That will cool the economy, which will impact inflation to some degree. But again, a lot of what you see in inflation is just supply and demand and supply chain issues. And the Fed is powerless to really exert any influence on that. So it's just a hard situation. I think, you know, what I hear is, you know, maybe there's a one-third chance of a recession in 2023 or 2024. But you hear more people talking about it, and it's psychological, right? A lot of this is psychological. The more you talk about it, the more it's probably apt to happen. So we'll see, which is, again, why we need a decent fund balance, you know, to ride that situation out. I just hope that recession waits for the economic, after the economic forum meets, right? We don't need it to happen right when they're meeting, so that they'll underestimate revenues going forward. So if it's going to happen, at least if it could just happen after December, and then after May of 2023, that'd be great.
I appreciate your analysis and your hard work on such a monumental, complex budget. I appreciate your analysis and your hard work on such a monumental, complex budget. And I think we're all very mindful of the lack of stability, you know, across the globe. I know I am, so. But thank you for your work. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Trustee Mayberry. The only thing I will add is a couple of things. One connects to one of your questions is because we have a structural budget and are there districts that don't? Well, we were one of those districts until four years ago. Every year, I mean, it was a huge effort, and Mr. Mather alluded to that earlier. We were one of those districts that really came out of the recession, speaking of recession, in 2008. And was, we were in that position year after year, and the board just began to make some really difficult decisions during that time. I mean, I think we cut a total of $66 million over a period of time to get to a structurally balanced budget, which is painful, very, very painful. So, yeah, we were, we were there. So there, and that was the, that was the former, and that was the Nevada plan. And if anybody can figure that plan out, we think this one's difficult. That one's really, really complex. So we were one of those districts for a long period of time. And going into this additional period of economic uncertainty, I'm just, it makes me even more proud of the work that the board's been doing, you know, beginning then as we first got into, it's really mostly under the leadership of Katie Simon-Hollins. He's like, this is something that's just really a priority, and the board lined up and made a lot of really difficult decisions, a lot of boards along the way to get there. But man, I'd rather be there, be here, and be structurally balanced and have a fund balance of 12%. Even though it dipped, as Trustee Church said, to, you know, 10 and 1/2, 11%, it's going to tick up a little bit more. But to be right around 11 and 1/2, 12% in this period of economic uncertainty is a much better position than we've been in the past. So you don't, you don't look, you can't look ahead and you don't know. But man, I'm just, I'm just grateful, so grateful for all that, for all that hard work that was done over those years to at least get us here so we can at least hang on tight. We have something to hang on to. You have something, Trustee Mayberry? Okay, Dr. Nicolet?
Madam President and colleagues, I'd like to make a motion.
Please. No, wait, 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 we have to close the public hearing?
Okay.
It looks like no more discussion? Okay. All right, then the public hearing is closed. Now we can go for a motion.
All right, thank you. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the final budget for the fiscal year 2023.
Second?
Okay, there is a motion on the floor that's a tentative budget for, that's a final budget, excuse me, for fiscal year 2023 is approved. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? The motion is carried. Let the record show, it is unanimous. And before you leave, gentlemen, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you very much, Madam President. So first of all, I just wanted to follow up on Trustee Smith's question. So our grant staff, they do a federal forecast every month, and so they always take a look at what federal grants are out there. We typically will not apply for anything that's 25 grants or lower than that, just depending if it's a competitive grant. But please know that they do follow the federal forecast for that as well, too. Looking very, very forward to our meeting tomorrow down in Carson City. We are cautiously optimistic that we will have a fruitful discussion. So I'll just say that. Thank you very much, Mark. But I also want to say, this is my final budget, and you all are in very, very good hands with your CFO as well as your budget director. I can tell you that we have had many discussions over my tenure as a superintendent, and I always appreciate Mark's and Jeff's, their passion and their belief in what our students are able to do as well as our staff. And it's thanks to this entire leadership team and to the board where we are today with our fiscal staff. So just thank you very much for all of your leadership in this area.
Thank you so much. Okay. We're going to go on, you know, why don't we, I know it's a little earlier than we typically do it. Let's, why don't we take a 10-minute break? Take a 10-minute break now, and then we'll come on back. We have two big agenda items, we can take those together as well. So we'll take a 10-minute recess and come on back, everybody? All righty, everyone, let's go ahead and get started. Okay, we'll call our meeting back to order. Thank you for that break time. We're on to Agenda Item 4.01, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve a Memorandum of Agreement between the Washoe County School District, WCSD, and the Washoe Education Support Professionals, or WESP as we call them, Regarding Compensation Adjustments to Address a Critical Labor Shortage in the Transportation, Housekeeping, and Nutrition Services Departments to Include Base Compensation Adjustments, COVID Differentials, and New Hire Referral and Retention Incentives. This is for possible action. We're going to, I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent to get us going. Dr. McNeil?
Thank you very much, Madam President. So just to inform the board, as you all know, we've, we've made several presentations, the most recent back on April 12 regarding this matter. Let's look at my microphone, there we go. A lot of work has been done. I mean, just as recently as late Friday afternoon, we met as a team, and then even on Saturday, we met as a team. This is extremely important to our school district. I know it's critically important to you all as well as trustees. And so a lot of the work has to do with job series, job classifications, and looking at the areas of transportation, custodial services, and nutrition services. Our aides and assistants, they won't be discussed in this presentation. We will update the board as far as what we're thinking of doing for our aides and assistants in the area of special education. So again, just a lot of work. We always want to be very cognizant that this is a negotiated item, so we cannot get out in front of negotiations. I'm happy to report that the Washoe Education Support Staff Association has been wonderful to work with, as all of our associations have been. And so we bring this forward to you today as an update, but then also to provide some additional updates around the areas of transportation. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Ellison.
Good afternoon, trustees. Emily Ellison, Chief Human Resources Officer for the Record. Thank you, Dr. McNeil, for the introduction. We are here, as Dr. McNeil said, to provide an update and to give you some more information on the ongoing negotiations process related to these critical labor shortages. We are going to talk a little bit about operations. Pete will cover that. I'm going to reiterate some of the non-compensation-based solutions that we're pursuing in terms of recruiting efforts. Then I'd like to spend some time talking about the considerations that are being weighed or the potential ramifications of making an adjustment in those areas where we're having critical shortages, and then provide a little bit of an update on where we are in terms of the negotiations process and the actual MOU, or I'm sorry, the conceptual package being contemplated.
Pete Dechar, Chief Operating Officer. So for an operations update, I'm going to a little bit focus on transportation today. So last month, you approved the middle school and high school hub system as the new level of service goal for the district and the reduction of about 43 vacant driver allocations ordered to negotiate with the Education Support Professional Association toward a compensation increase for our critical positions, including transportation. Now, the main part of the presentation today, as you just heard, will be Emily providing you an update on this, which she will do in a couple of minutes. But as far as where we are today in transportation, currently we need, currently we need about 47 additional drivers to be able to eliminate the area rotation plan and go back to the daily hub system that we utilized in January and February of this year. Based on the situation we are currently in, we will simultaneously be going down two tracks this spring and summer in regards to transportation planning. Our first track is to do everything we can to retain our current drivers and to hire new drivers. We also need to optimize our bus routing so that our system is as efficient as possible as we go into next year, and to reduce the number of drivers needed to get back to a daily hub system. Again, we are currently 47 drivers short of returning to the daily hub system. So for any employees listening, we are definitely not talking about layoffs. We're just trying to reduce that number from, say, 47 down to 35 or 40 drivers that we would need to be able to go back to that daily hub system. With the study that you approved as part of the consent agenda today, the consultant alpha route will be looking at many variables for optimizing our current system, including the ones you see on the slide. We hope to have initial results by around mid-June and hopefully have something more final, probably about around the beginning of July. I need to stress that even with optimizing our system and with anticipated pay increases and incentives for employees, there is absolutely no guarantee in this current labor market that we'll be able to hire and train enough drivers to be able to start the school year, which is only 12 weeks away, with enough drivers to have that daily hub system again. So in regards to training, we will be having our commercial driver's license, or CDL, training classes starting on June 21, July 11, and August 1. Our hope and desire is to fill these classes with as many future drivers as we can possibly get. And the requirements, I just want to stress a little bit on the requirements for getting a CDL with a student endorsement. It's 20 hours of classroom work, that's required, that's Department of Transportation required, and also 20 to 60 hours of behind-the-wheel time. And that's where we can unfortunately run into a bottleneck. We currently have seven staff that are qualified as behind-the-wheel instructors, and we're also trying to find assistance with this. And I think, you know, Director Lee is doing a great job with that. But again, that's a lot of behind-the-wheel time, and so we're looking for assistance with that. Now, therefore, due to the uncertainty of the labor market and the time needed to hire drivers, we unfortunately need to be prepared to open school on the area rotation plan. As you know, our accountability coordinator, Kyle Kemp, has been collecting attendance data, and we now have a pretty good idea and a good feel for what schools are most impacted when transportation is not available. Therefore, the second track that we're going to be taking this spring and summer is that we're going to be working on, looking at a weighted area rotation plan based on attendance and hardship data, and what that would look like for the beginning of the school year until we can get enough drivers to go back to the daily hub system. That could mean providing daily transportation to schools or areas that are most impacted by not having transportation while keeping the area rotation plan for less impacted schools or areas. And we recognize the hardship that puts a lot of families and students under. We are very cognizant of that. Lastly, it is our intention to continue to provide you updates this summer on where we stand in these efforts. Besides receiving updates from the superintendent, we plan to be back with public updates at these board meetings both June 28 and July 26. With that, I'm going to turn this back over to Emily.
We have, we have just a few questions before we do that on transportation. Trustee Smith?
Thank you, President Taylor. So as part of Track 1, are we also still looking at if bus drivers want to try to be employed during those middle sections? If we could just, just confirm that as well, too? Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. And providing work over the summer is another area of opportunity, and so we've been able to make forward progress on that and begin to generate interest lists. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. Trustee Church, and then Trustee Mayberry, and then Dr. Nicolet.
Thank you very much. Yeah, on the bus driver issue, my kind of understanding of the hub system, it's not ideal. We voted for it because we almost had no option. If we had more drivers, I think we might look at a different system. And that basically comes down to the study that we've just allocated the funding for. When do we think we might have the results of that study?
The initial study, we hope to have in mid-June, and then the final number is probably in July, beginning of July, to say, you know, how many we would need to get back to the daily hub system. And I agree, at the last, at the board meeting in April 12, you, you approved the hub system as our goal, and it's not ideal. It's not, I don't think what any of us would want, but it is, I think, the best option to keep us having transportation for the vast majority and all the students that have had transportation before, even though it means usually walking further for many students.
And then, again, this is not the place to negotiate the contract. But would we not, are we not putting the cart before the horse if we don't wait for that study? If he, he or she, the study, the group, they're not just looking at staffing, am I correct? They might find some innovative other ideas, am I correct? Or are they limited?
I think, you know, looking at the variables they'll be looking at, I don't think it's going to be, my personal opinion is not going to be this incredibly innovative change to everything we do. It's going to be looking of what we do now and making it more efficient. You know, where should the stops be? How far should students walk from their homes to a stop? I think they're going to look at every variable, and they have the capabilities to run multiple scenarios, multiple at one time. I mean, these were people that were basically professors and students at MIT. They use their expertise, they use the supercomputers to be able to run these analyses quickly. So we're going to get the initial results, we're going to take a look at it, we're going to ask them to run some different scenarios based on other variables, and then come back. My personal feeling also is, is that you've seen some incredible results from school districts around the nation with the decrease in the number of drivers needed for their systems. I don't know if we're going to see as much here because I have a lot of confidence in what our, our transportation team has been doing constantly. They have been analyzing these over and over again. So I'm, I'm optimistic that we're going to find savings, I really am. But as far as having some of the incredible savings, maybe not so much, just because of the great work of our team.
Speaking just for me, what I envisioned when I approved that, and again, I'm speaking strictly for me, is hopefully they'll look at innovative ideas. I mean, some of the, when you read how it's done nationwide, everybody's looking at everything from regular buses, negotiating with the regular bus service, Uber, I mean, anything, any innovative idea that, that I'm not smart enough to come up with. And as we spoke previously on, at one of the meetings, I hope that they also look into the concept of smaller buses that can legally transport 15 or less students, and there were some restrictions on where they can pick up and where they can drop off. But that might, at least, I hope they look at it as an option to, you know, different areas, it might, it might help. Because if I understand it, and you can correct me, they don't need the same level of commercial license for transporting students if it's 15 or less. Am I right?
No, I believe that's incorrect.
Okay.
To transport students, we have requirements where our buses have to be, and you have to have a commercial driver's license with a student endorsement for any size vehicle.
And what if they pick up at a private lot and drop off at a private lot?
I am going to turn this over to.
I was just going to say, Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee just popped up. So please, if you wouldn't mind addressing some of the questions from our Trustee Church. Please, Mr. Lee.
So as far as the van use, any transport to and from school, scheduled transport to and from school, you need to have a commercial driver's license. If it's in a van, it's got to be yellow, it's got to be marked, have the crossing arms and everything else, but it has to be a school bus. So as far as the consulting agency, they're looking at data, just, just data. They're not looking at other ideas. They do have experience with other districts, and they'll share that information with us, but they're doing math with their computers. That's essentially what they're doing. They're doing what we can't do in the amount of time that we need to do it. And to be able to look at all of these different scenarios, whether we're at our full staffing or staffing full enough to have full transportation service or a reduced service, we can't calculate all of those scenarios in the amount of time that we have to do.
In fact, I'm going to just, you know, you please go ahead, I'm just going to add on to what you're saying. Go ahead.
Yeah, I accept that. I don't like it, but it's the law, and, you know, I accept that, and I feel the pain. I mean, it's, it's a problem.
If I may, can I, just before, I know you're going to go to another topic, correct?
Same, but go ahead.
I mean, obviously it's on this, but it's around the transfer. I just wanted to add into what you're saying before, before we shift up a little bit. You know, I am, I think a couple of things. One is, first of all, the hub system, we all know is not ideal, right? But we know we went there because that's the only way we can keep transportation going. You know, by law, we only have to transport special ed kids, but we don't want to have to shut it down. And that gave us the opportunity to at least continue to pick all kids, all the kids up with this. I mean, I'm hoping, and I know we have a lot of vacancies that have to be filled, but I'm certainly hoping we can get away from that rotation where we have a week in various areas that don't get picked up. And I think we all are, I don't think any of us want kids to be left at home in that. But I just wanted to make sure, just based a little bit on part of what Trustee Church was asking or stating, is that we're going, we will always be open to, if we get, all of a sudden, we get a whole lot more drivers and someone, a model can be shifted or adjusted to accommodate that. Am I right? It's not that, well, we have extra drivers, but now we don't need them because everything, I don't anticipate, I mean, a lot would have to happen for us to get there, so let's just start with that. But it doesn't mean that we're stuck with this into perpetuity if there's a shift and we're able, from a labor market standpoint, able to attract more drivers, am I correct?
Well, I think that goes back to the last presentation, actually, because what you approved on April 12 is that we would eliminate vacant positions, so we would have the approved on April 12th is that we would eliminate vacant positions, so we would have the financial flexibility to negotiate these increases with the associations. So if all of a sudden everything changed and we had ability to hire more drivers, we would have to talk about the financial side of that, which goes back to, hopefully we need more resources.
Yeah, you'd have to come back here.
We would have to come back here to talk about how we would pay for hiring more drivers to get off of the hub system, to go back to basically picking up in neighborhoods.
Yeah, but, but as a board, we would have that out, we could make that decision at that time and say, okay, great, we can get away from this hub system because we have people, we can do that. And that means financially and so, we'd have to arm wrestle with Mark, you know, whatever, whatever it takes to, to come up with some finance, but then the board can make that shift should we find ourselves in that position. Okay, thank you, thank you. Continue, trustee.
Yeah, and just one more final question on the bus driver. My memory, which is the best in the world, can't remember what I had for breakfast, but back in February, I think it was, we were down 88 drivers based on the pre-hub system. Now we're down 47 drivers, but are we continuing to lose drivers? Are we gaining drivers? How are we doing?
Well, the reason it says we need 47 drivers is I'm taking off the 43 that we've already basically eliminated, so we are still higher. I think that now that we have gone to the hub system, our whole goal, for the goal of a hub system, our whole goal right now is to fill enough drivers to get to that. So we need this 47 to roughly 50 drivers to get to the hub system, to get off the area rotation plan. So I'm not really looking at vacancies from the original 303 allocations anymore. I think our goal, our thermometer, we're going to try to reach is get to that point where we have enough drivers to get back to the hub system. And then where we go from there, as President Taylor said, that would be wonderful. But right now, it's the hub system goal, so that's the number I'm going to be reporting to you, is how many drivers we need.
So my question then is, how are we doing, say, the last three or four months? How are we doing on up and down, or?
We're still losing bus drivers.
Losing?
Yes, we are. So we look forward to, and I don't want to jump ahead of Emily here, but we're going to be talking about the associations and starting to advertise. That's the rush, is to advertise, to make sure our bus drivers know what we're going to be paying, the incentives, and fill up those classes again this summer. That is our goal. We've got three classes coming up, we want to fill them to the max.
Thank you, trustee church. Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you, Madam President. I think trustee church asks most of my questions, just for clarif, some, a couple of clarifying questions. Hub system, middle, high school, the elementary level, just refresh my memories, that's still the, the more traditional pickup and drop off?
Right now, and Director Lee can correct me if I'm wrong, but yeah, elementary school is still traditional, but we are looking as part of this study of where should the stops be? It could be a reduction in the number of stops we have. I wouldn't call that really an elementary school hub system, but something similar, where maybe it's like winter stops, you know, like we have less stops during winter days. It could be something like that. So that's where they're going to run all these scenarios and tell us how we can, how we can benefit from having, you know, less drivers with these different scenarios.
And you said something that piqued my interest in terms of the training. So a driver gets a CDL, now, now he's a student driver with a CDL certificate, and he needs, what, about 20? He needs some time with, some, some practice time, right? Is, is there another driver in the vehicle at that time?
Director Lee?
Scott Lee, Director of Transportation. So yeah, that's a great question. How we have it set up right now, it's going to vary a little bit depending on the level of experience of the driver. Let's say they had some heavy or medium-duty equipment experience, and, but, but didn't require a commercial driver's license in, in construction or something. That's where I came from a long time ago, before I, I drove a bus. And those folks are going to learn a lot faster, so their behind-the-wheel time is going to be much reduced. But as far as the classroom goes, they have to complete the modules set by the feds, and that takes as long as it takes. It's usually about two weeks. There's a lot of hang-up on nomenclature and learning all of these things. And then the following two weeks are usually dedicated to driving behind-the-wheel training, so to speak. So at that time, they're monitored, they'll pass their, their license, and then they'll be on a route with, with a trainer still there to assist, help in, or in the event that we had a substitute driver, the luxury of having a substitute driver sitting around, they would continue on with them. So it's, it's a warm handoff. We don't throw them out to the, to the wolves, so to speak.
Yeah, I just, I, my concern is that delay is, is probably, by the time you get somebody getting ready to get behind the wheel in, in official capacity, you, we've already lost a bus driver. So it's, you know, one step forward, one step back.
On average, it's between three and a half and four weeks it takes to train a driver with no experience.
Okay, thanks for that clarity, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Director Lee and trustee Mayberry. Dr. Nicolet?
Yes, thank you. Just some terminology clarification in Track Two. How do, how are we defining weighted area and then also attendance? I, I understand the definition of attendance, but why is that variable embedded in Track Two? And then hardship data? I can assume it's free and reduced lunch. What other hardship data might be variables?
You're right, the attendance data, I think, is what was presented to you, you know, with, with Kyle was here to show you what the attendance was on a week where the school had transportation versus a week where they did not have it. So now that we've gone through each different area a couple of times, I think we're getting a pretty good feel for how that, how it's impacted the school. And it's, it's interesting, because in those areas, I mean, some schools will be impacted extremely negatively while other ones aren't. So it's going to be up to us to take a look at that data and say, how can we manipulate this to make sure that we're providing transportation to those schools or those communities that most need it? The hardship data, one of the things when I was putting this down is that we had kind of reached out to principals to say, reach out to your community, you know your students, you know your families. If there are families who are having a hard time being able to get to school on those weeks where there is no transportation available, we created a way to pay them, to help them with getting their kids to school. So we have a form that we work through the principals with to, and the counselors, to reach out to their families. So we want to use that data also. Where, where's the largest percentage of families that are having hardship in getting their kids to school? So I think that's how we're combining attendance and hardship, to look at that, how we weight this rotation plan toward focusing it toward the schools and areas that are most at need.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Nicolet, please, go ahead. Who's, who's up? Ms. Allison?
All right. So I mentioned before that we provided an update on recruiting when we were here on April 12th, but I did want to reiterate the efforts that the human resources team is engaged in. You can see the results there in terms of the number of people that we've been able to hire since July 1st of last year, and that's when we put in to place some incentive pilot programs that we hadn't utilized before. Trustee Mayberry, one step forward, one step back is, is certainly the feeling right now. We've had 79 hires this year in transportation, which is a 26% increase over last year, but we still are struggling in the way that we're struggling. And so, you know, I, I do think that many of these efforts are working. I think that the market is terribly competitive, and compensation is a huge component of that when we're talking about these areas. I also just want to commend my team, because I think a 26% increase in transportation, a 58% increase in individuals recruited for nutrition services, I'm not going to give you the number for housekeeping, because the year before last, we did a layoff, or I'm sorry, reverse nutrition services and housekeeping. In nutrition services, we did a layoff in the 2021 school year, so we're hundreds of percentages over in recruiting for that. But, you know, when we look at averages in terms of staffing a recruiting team, the Society for Human Resources Management, which is sort of the gold standard in our profession, says that at any given time, there, a recruiter should be working on 30 to 40 open requisitions, open positions. When I was in the staffing industry, where you're recruiting kind of high volume for like-type positions, many positions like this, I operated at about a, you know, 45 to 50 ratio per recruiter. We're at about one recruiter for every 70 openings right now. So I just, again, want to give a shout out to the, to the efforts of our team. At that meeting, you also provided some direction to the superintendent to work with WESP, the Washoe Education Support Professionals, to reach an agreement regarding critical shortage compensation adjustment process. And I just want to take a moment, I know Dr. McNeil did as well, to give a shout out to our association partners in WESP. But I just want to provide some clarity about the challenge that they're facing. The, the crisis is substantial, we know the nature of the crisis, and they also have to advocate for the needs of all of their employees. So they have really been tremendous partners in trying to come up with a, a process and a proposal and a package that addresses the, the crisis nature of this situation, but that also takes many of these considerations into account. You know, really what we're trying to do is attract and retain ESP staff in order to have, you know, in order to meet minimum service levels moving forward. And the complexities and potential ramifications of a narrowly focused compensation increase can't be overstated. And so as much as we would have liked to have the final MOU for you to review today, we felt like it was important to provide an update on the progress that's being made, and also reiterate all of the competing objectives that we're trying to balance as a part of this process. So I'll just review those again quickly. As a reminder, it is a bit unorthodox to have a public discussion of the negotiations process, and so, but this is an unprecedented situation. And we also felt that it was important for you all to have operational updates as we close out the year and transition into the next, wanted to recognize the collaboration of our association partner, and then, of course, wanted to make sure that as we're trying to develop this very out-of-the-box solution, that we are continuing to head in the right direction based on the desires and wishes of the board. So I, again, because it's a little bit unorthodox, talking about negotiations, I don't want to seem like I'm negotiating with the Board of Trustees versus the association. So there may be information that I can't necessarily provide, and I'll talk about concepts versus specifics, but again, wanted to be able to, to give you an idea of where we're headed. So why is this so complicated? Labor negotiations, right? We know that we have five bargaining units, and we have other employees who are unrepresented, and compensation is the mandatory subject of negotiations. And so there's a process, obviously, that goes into that, but it's important to recognize that WESP represents all of their members and not just a subset of their members that are in these areas that are experiencing critical shortages. So it's very, very important to me and to leadership that we work with WESP and design a solution that, that can easily be explained and justified, right? Because we know that many of our employees are feeling the pressures of inflation, and it's very, very important that we do not push forward with a solution that, you know, disenfranchises WESP members or creates a divide among their membership. We also know that funding is a problem. Mark talked at length about our 1.3% per pupil increase. That doesn't cover our 2.85% step increases, roughly, and that's far less than inflation. And we know that these changes are being made in consideration with allocation changes. So it's important to drive home the point that these are, these are somewhat self-funding changes that are being made, because we're sweeping vacant allocations, which will result in service level changes. And we don't have the opportunity to do that in every department or position in our district. The unsustainability of funding is obviously a, a substantial concern. Often, we're asked, why not ESRS? Why not use ESRS funding to close the gap? As has been shared many times, that funding ends in fiscal year '24. And really, the, you know, while we can definitively say some of the labor market pressures we are experiencing are a result of COVID, we know, too, that those monies were, were intended and earmarked for, you know, pandemic recovery and sort of the impact that it's had on our students and families. And so where do you strike that balance between how the different, you know, how the money is utilized? Mark said in his presentation, and I will reiterate, one-time sources should be used for one-time costs, and compensation is not a one-time cost. So, you know, as we look to who is eligible and in what way and in what amount, we are working with very, very limited resources. And so it's not as if we just have a lot of options available and, you know, are, are trying to fine-tune the wording. It's changes being made dependent on other changes and being made in an effort to try to avoid unintended consequences and, you know, severe ramifications. Not just within grant funding, but, you know, we have to worry about the sustainability of the general fund as well. And Mark talked a bit about the, the future funding and, you know, uncertainty around what our per pupil funding will look like moving forward, and that we know enrollment is also a concern. So even if we gain dollars in per pupil, if we lose students in enrollment, we know that that overall has an impact on our revenue and keeps us locked into this very limited resource box. We're really spending a lot of time also thinking about the dynamic nature of the labor market and the size of the wage gap. It is a complicating factor. We are working with very limited resources, so we have to really carefully consider things like, you know, what will happen if a recession materializes? Or, you know, how, how should that impact our strategy in this change? We are looking to wage data in order to try and make an informed decision about, you know, what the, what the increase should look like, and wage indexes are often dated. The Bureau of Labor Statistics information is from 2020. And so we're looking, we're trying to utilize sources, again, that both the district and the association can really articulate how we got to the place that we end up. Excuse me, of course, we want the solution to be effective, and so there's always a balance between trying to meet the needs of everyone and make everyone happy, but then diluting where the need really is. And we spend, we're spending a lot of time talking about that. And then we know that these are not the only areas that are impacted, but these are the areas that are most impacting our families and our students right now. When it comes to the classification system and salary compression, I'll, I'll just kind of define those terms to, to get us started. But a classification system is really a way of organizing jobs for the purposes of compensation. It takes into consideration things like qualifications, certifications, the nature of the work, the complexity of the work, the physical intensity of the work. And so we have, obviously, for 8,000 employees, a pretty sophisticated compensation system. And so to, to make a change within that system to a particular element has a ripple effect to other elements within the system, because they're all interconnected and, and graded. So skills build upon skills and certifications build upon certifications. So again, we have to try and identify a solution that doesn't, that doesn't erode the integrity of that system and the structure of that system. And then we have to consider salary compression, and that is the concept of space between steps, right? So does the employee make as, as much or less or more than the supervisor when you, when you start to close that gap, right? That's the compression that we're talking about. And then, of course, linking that to the classification system, you know, all of our positions have been graded for complexity, and if we make an increase to a lower-graded position that now brings them up to the level of a higher-graded position, of course, people who have, you know, those skills and certifications and experience at that higher-graded position are going to feel that compression. So again, we're, we're working really hard to balance all of these considerations and, and most significantly, morale. While our bus drivers and education support professionals are represented by WESP, all of our employees work for the Washoe County School District. And so we have to be, again, very sensitive to, to devising a plan that doesn't have, you know, detrimental consequences to the organization, and that's understood by employees who obviously are experiencing, you know, this crisis shortage in these departments. So some of the concepts that we are talking about are consistent-
Before you go on, do we have, we have a question, trustee church, before we move over and-
Yeah, thank you. I want to go back to slide five. So a few comments or questions, and it kind of relates to slide six, but slide five, we're not here to negotiate the contract in public, but generally, past practice, if we look at previous public record contracts, do they generally have a reopening clause if our funding does fall to a threshold?
Yes, generally. Each of the contracts is worded a little bit differently, but generally, there's reopener language.
Okay. And then on the slide five, more comments than questions. I taught recruiting nationwide, I've said it many times, I'm not looking for any money, I'm happy here, but I have taught recruiting nationwide. I would love to see WCSD, the school district, as well as Reno, get on the map by hosting a national conference on school recruiting. Wouldn't cost any money, because you charge a fee and it pays for the cost, and maybe somebody from the RSCVA or somebody's- somebody from the RSCVA or somebody's listening, but I, I think that we could learn a lot and by doing that. And Reno obviously is a destination resort, as well it should be because it's a beautiful community, which is why Ms. Enfield chose to, to come here. But I think we ought to look into that. That's just my own opinion, but I do. The, the second thing we've talked about before, but I'll put it again on the public record, I think we need to look at reaching out to our wonderful university, UNR, as well as those rebels down the road, UNLV, and/or any other university where you have students working on their masters or PhD dissertation or thesis. And generally, from my knowledge, it's free because they're doing it anyway, ask them to look into this very issue if they want to do that for their thesis. You know, the worst they can do is say no. Or the worst, or you get a product that maybe doesn't meet our expectations, but at least we tried, and it's, again, little or no cost. So those are just two of my opinions on slide five. In addition to all the great work you're doing, and not to take away from that, but those are just my two suggestions, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Okay, please, go ahead, we'll jump back in.
All right. So we talked a bit at the April 12th meeting about a conceptual framework for addressing particularly critical shortages, and we have been working with WESP on determining the elements of that framework. It's a, like I shared before, a variety of quantitative and qualitative factors, things like vacancy rates, turnover, compensation as a percentage of market, whether or not it's, the position has been designated critical needs. All of those kinds of things would be utilized in concept to identify which positions would be critical shortage compensation adjustment eligible. And then we had hoped to, we had hoped to, you know, plug the information into the spreadsheet and then compare market and our wages and be able to apply some kind of a formula to then spit out what the increase should be. But it didn't work out exactly the way we had hoped. A lot of it has worked out well, but. So I shared earlier that the compensation information from Bureau of Labor Statistics and other sources is a bit dated. And so what we have done, and you all, I think are aware of this, but we engaged a compensation consultant to help us with some of these larger compensation questions that we have encountered. And so the consultant utilizes several data clearinghouses that are able to provide more current information. And so I believe that our recommendation will be to utilize consultant compensation recommendations versus the BLS data, Bureau of Labor Statistics data that we had talked about before. But in many ways, this conceptual framework is very much like we talked about on April 12th, just again, kind of fine tuning the details with the association. One of the other compensation concepts that has emerged in our conversations is that of a COVID differential. And you're familiar with this as, as a concept because we've done it for, we've done it for some of our other bargaining units. But in this situation, we would utilize, potentially utilize this as a tool to provide some parity for our ESP employees with other associations that settled before, settled after WESP did. So again, I envision that this will be part of a comprehensive package of solutions that we'll bring forward. And then in terms of new hire retention and referral incentives, we do think it's important for the continuation of those incentives. Again, the specific dollar amounts and, and terms and conditions will be included in what we bring to you for final approval. But one change that we really do want to consider in working with all of our associations is opening up the referral incentives to any employee. So what we did during the pilot was referral incentive, if you're an ESP employee and you refer a bus driver, nutrition services, custodial, you got that referral incentive. We are exploring implementation of cross-unit. So if a teacher, for example, refers a bus driver, they would be eligible for that incentive as well. We will continue to only incentivize those positions that are these most critical fill because again, we're working with critical shortage, we're working with limited resources. But these, these are some of the concepts that have emerged in our conversations and that will likely be included in the final agreement that we bring to you for approval at the next meeting.
Well, we don't have the memorandum of, of agreement, and so I don't really think that
there's a motion that needs to be made at this point in time. It's really just, we're going to continue down the road with working with WESP. And again, I compliment Emily and Pete and Mark and, and the entire team and WESP for working on this process. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. First, do we have any public comment on this?
Pablo Nava Duran.
Welcome, Mr. Duran.
I want to give a message to, so I want to give a message to the student who cannot afford a ride, who cannot like, get on a bus to school, who cannot get to school because of there was no bus route to them to get to the school, nor, nor like Washoe County School District public participation to school. And I think, I do agree with Trustee Church about the Uber, and any incentive that I get the student to ride to school to increase their attendance and then make sure, we want to make sure that better students prepare for the school. And I do recently, recently, many of the students in New World Area that could not get to school to Des Moines High School because, because many of us, we are on, on public participation to get to from school. And then I think a good incentive is we should contact to maybe RTC, RTC, to give a like, give an incentive to public participation for students to get, to and from school, from middle school to high school level. And we know, we know like this one cannot waste the wages on a worker and whatever they want because of a, they have to do on the state government's approvals, so. And very sad to see the labor shortage, the bus shortage, and think about how to buy a car in the near future to get my sister to go to and from school. And maybe if this solution doesn't resolve in the next few years, I think like, we might, like we visit New World Area and then like, we zone to HUG or Spark, but I know HUG and Spark is less than three hours, but let's move on, move on to that. So I think the RTC, could convert to RTC, a bus to the high school, to near high school, does resolve for the labor shortage. That's my opinion, or maybe it's punishment with the Uber, but that's, will cost a lot of money, like, oh, I'd talk about a thousand or $2,000 per week, so, okay, that's what I'm giving mine.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
The board received an email from Jessica Fry.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back here. It looks like we're in, in the process where staff was hoping to have things resolved in terms of memorandum of understanding, but it's, it's complicated. I mean, just naming all the issues, hearing all the issues that you named and working and doing it fairly and doing it a way that's caring to all of the employees that we have that work, that work for WCSD. And so more, more work continues, needs to be done. So at this point, really there, from a recommendation standpoint, we don't really even need to make the recommendation, it's, it's outside the agenda item anyway, but really this is possible action, so the board would, would not take action, but it's certainly open for discussion if the board has anything they'd like to weigh in on pertaining to this particular issue. No other comments from the board? Okay, then we say go forth and can, and continue the good work. Thank you so much. Okay. Now on to agenda item 4.02, Presentation Discussion, excuse me, and Possible Action to Improve the Recommendations of the Zoning Advisory Committee to Modify or Not Modify Enrollment Boundaries Which May Affect Brown Elementary School, Ted Huntsberger Elementary School, and Elizabeth Lenz Elementary School. This is effective for the 23-24, right? Not the upcoming school year, but the 23-24, our chair is nodding her head, uh, school year. So there's a more than a year in terms of adjusting, should the board make, take action at this time. And who's going to start this? Mr. Circe, Miss Lead Area Superintendent, Ms. Lauren Ford.
Madam President, Superintendent McNeil, Board of Trustees, Lauren Ford, Area Superintendent and Staff Liaison for the Zoning Advisory Committee. And with me today is Adam Circe, Chief Facilities Officer, and Christine Hull, the Chair of our committee. Just a quick reminder that the Zoning Advisory Committee is a 13-member group. We are governed by Admin Regulation 7107 and Board Policy 7105. When we are considering zoning, the Office of School Leadership, working with Adam Circe's Department, we really look at programs, we look at transportation, we look at the Board Policy and Admin Regulations, and we look at rezoning variances. Rezoning variances address the oldest grade levels at each school site, so fifth graders, fourth graders rising to fifth grade, or it would be seventh graders rising to eighth grade. In the high school case, we do look at 11 and 12th rising for those variances.
Is that clear for everyone, the rezoning piece? Okay.
And so I just wanted to go over a couple of really important points for 7107 that we looked at very specifically for this particular schooling, these two zones. So one of them.
Ms. Hull, I'm going to interrupt you just for a moment.
Yes, I need to say my name.
Yes, you do, thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Allergies are like, blocking my world. Okay, Christine Hull for the Record Chair of the Zoning Advisory Committee.
Thank you so much.
Also former Washoe County teacher.
Oh, thank you twice for that. Yeah, yeah, we are hiring Emily.
I'm, I'm good. I'm, I'm good. Long story. Anyway, so one of the most important pieces of, of this was the first item on this bullet here on 7107. We had several subdivisions in small neighborhoods that were literally neighbors going to two separate schools, and it was really complicated. The lines were not clearly drawn, so as you can see in number three, we want to, our goal is to create compact attendance zones with few or no islands. And when you see Adam's maps, the initial maps, you will, we had, we had a conversation about what they looked like, that we think that they might be like a Halloween jack-o'-lantern or something. And so that was, that was a really important piece for us to look at. In this situation, we did not have to deal with any feeder patterns because both of these schools go to Marcy Hurst and then on to Galena. So that did not impact our high school. This was really only an elementary rezone, and very specifically, and as Lauren's going to get into, because Elizabeth Lenz was overcrowded, and Huntsberger had some space. So we also do, after your conversation you just had about transportation, we do talk about transportation in the, as much as possible to ensure that we're not adding bus routes with any decisions that we make. We're hoping to maybe eliminate a few bus routes if possible. The next piece that we, we hear a lot in our community are concerns about how we do zoning. And one thing that I, I want to make sure that the board knows that we do is that we use the data from Adam's office and the maps as our, our source material. We do not make decisions based on the type of housing. So permanent housing versus temporary, we don't make any decisions based on that because that would violate the equal protection clause of the US Constitution. And the government teacher and me just can't handle that. So, okay.
For this discussion, our last May meeting was also held at Hurst Middle School. So we spent four meetings discussing the different options for this area, looking at the different rezoning. We took into consideration ideas that the community had in their public comments. We also took ideas from the Zoning Advisory Committee. So we're about to get into Lenz rezon, and I'm going to hand it off to Adam, but because of some of the concerns we heard expressed from the committee and information from the principal, I did take a tour of the school during school hours with Super, Area Superintendent Ms. Dixon and the current principal, Mr. Keller of the school. And we walked around to look at it. It is a pod school, so they have the hallways with four classrooms in their little pods. The two classrooms that sit at the front are smaller sized classroom. A fifth grade class could not fit in that classroom, it has too many students. So the old, upper grade classes are on the outside pods, and I met with both fifth grade teachers, and they showed me their classrooms. The desks are jam-packed, they have set it up so they can do a little like U-rotation in the middle to be able to spend time with each student. Their concerns were pulling small groups to the side of their classroom. That's just not possible. There isn't room for an additional table at this point. The principal expressed, expressed concerns in regards to teachers moving classrooms every year because this year, this classes, the fourth grade classes are larger, we've got to move them over here. The fifth grade classes are larger, we've got to move them over here. We've got to combine and do co-teaching model in first grade, we've got to move those teachers here. So those were some of the concerns we saw. Also, while I was doing the tour, Christine met with the PTO at a standing room only event to talk about concerns with the overcrowding at Lenz and what they were seeing from their lens, their lens, their viewpoint as parents. Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to Adam Circe. Oh no, it's still me, sorry. Oh no, yeah. Public engagement, we did do all the reach out to the community, we did Blackboard Connect calls from every single school affected and possibly affected by the rezoning, and we did all of our social media and public posting. We did have a lot of public engagement at each of the four events. The public comment did go from, please don't rezon our Lenz students, to can you please, please do this rezoning now so that I can start my students' next school year at Huntsberger? There is room there. And that spread from kindergartners to first graders to second graders, all wanting to start early at Lenz. So our comments went like this by the end, so. Adam?
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. My name's Adam Circe for the Record, Chief of Facilities. I'll take a few slides here just to orient the group and anybody who's watching this as to kind of how we like to depict this. These are the same slides, the same information that was presented to the zoning committee in many cases, multiple times. But these are the existing conditions out there. Just to get your bearings, we like to depict the existing elementary school enrollment boundaries with the blue lines, so you can see those all over the map. The existing middle school boundaries are the colors, so you really only see the two colors there representing Marcy Hurst and Kendall DePole Middle Schools. And then the high school boundaries are difficult to see, kind of overlaid, they're a heavier gold line, but also really only two high schools serving that area between Galena and Des Moines Ranch. You can get your bearings with the existing schools starred in this area. And you can also see the jagged irregular existing boundary line there between Huntsberger and Lenz that was mentioned earlier. There's a similarly irregular boundary line kind of heading towards the south between Huntsberger and Lenz, splitting communities right down the middle of a street. So neighbors coming out their front door, looking across the street at their neighbor, going to different schools. We wanted to use this as an opportunity to improve upon that. Of course, you also see most of your major geographic boundaries. I think on the next slide, you can get a better sense with the aerial imagery, the same existing boundary lines and the existing features highlighted, but you've got your Wolf Run Golf Club, as well as your Arrow Creek Parkway, Zalezy Lane, Thomas Creek, Wedge Parkway, and then of course, Mount Rose Highway, I-580 Virginia Street, all major geographic features in this area that we begin to use to create options for revisions to the enrollment boundaries. But this is just an orientation slide.
Before you go on for this, we have a question, let's jump in, Dr. Nicolet.
Thank you, thank you, Adam. A little history, the jagged lines, the, the looks like an island, what's the history? What were the decisions behind this configuration? It, it will help me and maybe others to understand why it occurred this way.
The short answer to your question is that I don't know. I can't say that these particular boundary lines were, have been in place for many, many years. They have not been changed within the last five years. And beyond that, you know, it, it splits through subdivisions that were And beyond that, you know, it splits through subdivisions that were built at the same time. You know, there's no obvious, like this was built in 1985, and it wasn't until 1990 when the, what now looks to be the same subdivision was built. And I can't speculate beyond that.
Fair enough, thank you.
Appreciate your honesty. We don't know, okay.
But we're fixing it.
We are fixing it.
This is another existing condition slide. We mentioned this is the data that comes to the committee and comes to the board from the Facilities Department. This is data that's generated primarily on development and population information that we get from the University of Nevada, Cherokee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, and other regional data sources. And we translate essentially population data into student enrollment data, right? We know where our students live, and we know historical rates of which housing in this part of town generates students, and we can then create these projections. But as you can see here, Lenz is clearly in an overcrowded situation today and projects to remain in that status. Hunsburger, on the other hand, with the opening of Marcy Hurst, we were able to move the 6th graders up into middle school and created some additional capacity to consider for this particular rezone. So, that's all just some background information, and on the next slide, we'll dive into really the meat of the discussion. So, this is the same slide that we saw, you know, three slides ago with our existing boundary lines. And then, over the course of several meetings, we actually, you know, sort of subdivided the areas between Hunsburger and Lenz into different pockets for consideration. So, you know, for the purposes of following along, you can kind of see at the bottom of this slide, you've got three areas labeled A, A1, A2, A3, and then you've got an area B up there. You know, we oftentimes follow this approach where, you know, we look for logical areas to try to piece together different options, but areas that would stand on their own merits, right? So, you can follow from those previous slides. Area A1, for example, that line is being drawn, that red dash line is being drawn on Arrow Creek Parkway, and then down on Wedge Parkway to Mount Rose Highway. So, those are existing major geographic features that make sense to consider as a potential individual piece in a rezone. Similarly, Area B bounded by Zalezy Lane, and then down really through the golf course there, carving that out as Area B. And then just for the purposes of discussion with the committee, labeling those with the number of students that currently are in elementary schools in each of those areas. All of those areas are currently in Lenz Elementary, and so the options that we then presented and discussed are variations of one or more of those areas moving to Hunsburger, right? Or, as we'll see later, moving to Brown, to relieve the overcrowding at Lenz. It'll come up later, but it's a good point to note on this slide. Coincidentally, Area B and Area A2 have the same number of students, elementary school students in them currently. So, you'll see how that plays out. But that was, you know, we created the areas based on the logical geographic boundaries, and it just turns out that currently there's exactly the same number of students living in each of them. Okay? This is what we called cleanup. So, in a scenario where, you know, we would opt to go with options A only, we wanted the committee actually, through discussion, felt strongly that if we didn't rezone Area B, that we at least needed to redraw that boundary line. That one in particular, B0, does affect several existing students potentially. Area A0 only has one student currently, and I believe it states they're there in 5th grade, so technically wouldn't be impacted by this rezone. But those were all options that were presented to the committee, or these were the basis for the options, right? On the next slide, we start to dive into a whole bunch of combinations of options. So, you know, anytime that we've got three, four, or five different subcomponents, there's a larger number of ways that you can combine them. Many of them are fatally flawed, and we often, you know, show our work, you know, so that the committee or when other members of the public say, "Hey, have you ever thought about this or that?" Yes, we did, and the numbers unfortunately don't work, or the total number of students don't fit. So, you see options 3 through 7 there. Those are efforts over the course of several meetings to just summarize, hey, we did analyze that combination of scenarios, and it, you know, leaves one school or the other in an overcapacity or nearly overcapacity situation. But really, through that work, revealed that options 1 and 2 really do yield a quite balanced enrollment and projected enrollment. So, that's, if you recall from the previous slides, A1 and A2, moving from Lenz to Hunsburger, that's option 1 with, of course, the B0 cleanup. Or, A1 and B, moving from Lenz to Hunsburger, produces similar enrollment numbers we'll see on the next slide because A2 and B have the same number of students in them. So, those both work. These are, you know, map depictions of those options. So, option 1, you can see A1 and A2, where those two areas on either side of Wedge Parkway, now being moved from Lenz, they're shown on this map as being a part of the Hunsburger zone. And then the option B0, you can see that line between Hunsburger and Lenz being more regular shaped. So, that's option 1. And then option 2, as was described previously, you can see that entire Area B moving into Hunsburger, and only Area A1 moving into Hunsburger. Area A2, and of course, Area 3, A3 in this scenario, stays in Lenz. So, just letting everybody get their bearings on this one. You can see Zalezy Lane there, Wolf Run Golf Course, Arrow Creek Parkway, Wedge Parkway, and then your major Virginia Street and I-580 boundaries there. These are the maps for these options. On the next slide are the numbers. Both of them move a significant number of students from Lenz Zone into the Hunsburger Zone, and you can see the existing conditions on the top table and the proposed, or the resulting enrollment projections for options 1 and option 2, essentially identical, again because Area A2 and B have the same number of students in it. But, an excellent balance. However, through the discussion and significant community input, this is yet another example, I feel, where the community input really did improve the final recommendation. So, lots of questions and discussion and different ideas that came from the members of the public and the community. Originally, staff really only considered a movement between Lenz and Hunsburger, and it was, you know, through that input that we asked some questions about, hey, could Brown Elementary School be involved in this? And so, so what we, what we analyzed and presented was an option similar to what we just discussed with Area A1 and B, or A1 and A2, but also including Area 3, which we'll see some maps on next, going to Brown Elementary. And so, those have similarly well-balanced numbers, but actually provide even just a little bit more overcrowding relief to Lenz.
Dr. Nicollet?
Thank you. So, this is deep-dive work, and I really appreciate it. And the entire committee and anybody who shared their, their passion on it. I have a question about the, the A3 to Brown. That is crossing a major highway?
Yeah, so maybe if we could switch to the next slide. You know, it looks a little funny on this map, but if you can picture yourself down at the Summit Sierra Mall, right? That's Virginia Street, Mount Rose, and then I-580 kind of curving behind there. So, that community, that, that is just one multifamily unit apartment complex with, what did we show there? 25 students currently approximately. They're, they're somewhat isolated, you know? They're, they're bound by major roadways on all sides. So, they're currently provided transportation to Lenz by virtue of distance, but also by virtue of those types of geographic barriers. So, what we're talking about in these next scenarios are to provide them transportation rather to Brown Elementary School. It's, it's geographically closer, actually, than Lenz, and, you know, despite the way that it kind of looks dislocated on the map, and even it took us a bit to wrap our minds around it, the numbers work well, as you'll see. And then, in speaking with transportation, it is a net-neutral impact as far as their total number of routes or buses. You know, there's students that are provided transportation to Brown Elementary School who live on the opposite side of Geiger Grade from Brown Elementary School, and that there is capacity and time in those existing routes to essentially just drive up the street, up Mount Rose Highway, to these residences and pick up those additional students and bring them to Brown.
So, can you help, can you share the discussion about sending them to Hunsburger? And you ended up with Brown. What was that discussion like? Please?
So, really, I think on, you know, one of the previous options that we looked at and ruled out, so it would have been option 6, A1, A2, and A3 to Hunsburger from Lenz, results in the overcrowding being shifted from Lenz to Hunsburger. And then we looked at how A1 and A2 and A3 sit relative to Hunsburger, and said, you know, they kind of need to go in that order. If we're going to rezone Area A3 to Hunsburger, we need to rezone Area A1 and A2 to Hunsburger as well because of their proximity to Hunsburger. So, we, we couldn't, we ended up essentially in a situation where either A3 was going to stay in Lenz, which is what it's doing in options 1 and 2. But to move it to Hunsburger basically wasn't possible. It would result in too many students moving to Hunsburger. We felt good with options 1 and 2, where A3 was staying in Lenz, but it was only through that community input where we said, okay, let's, let's look a little bit more closely at if moving option 8, or Area A3 to Brown would be operationally feasible, which it's proven to be, and then, community input and discussion with the committee, hey, do we feel comfortable with this? And that's, that's where we're at.
And I appreciate that, because it's just, I'm just, one thought, and that, that busy road, that busy area just really worries me, but I understand. And I also think at the same time, when we say "transportation," I think to myself, we hope that elementary school transportation will be what we need it to be. And, and it just worries me a little bit, but I understand, and I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Really, if I may just jump onto that, that's, that, that makes me think about the recommendation to move A3 to Brown because it's, it's net-neutral on transportation. And so, that allows us, that doesn't add a route, doesn't, you said, doesn't add a route, doesn't add a bus, and I'm thinking, doesn't add a person. Because that's, we have more buses than people. I mean, that's, that's more, people is more of an issue than that. So, it's, I think about that as well, and, and because of their proximity as they're located, that they're going to cross somewhere, as it turns out. It's like they're, they're, they have to cross a major, are they, we prefer them not, but there's nothing we can do about it. They're going to cross somewhere.
You're, you're absolutely correct, Christine Hull for the record. This particular community is completely surrounded by very active roadways. So, regardless, they are on Mount Rose Highway, they're on Virginia Street, or they're on 395. And they, they are physically closer to Brown Elementary. And again, this does not impact their middle school and high school because they, they would have been going to Hurst and Galena with Brown, or Lenz, or Hunsburger. So, but, but we did absolutely ask about transportation, and Adam is so good about getting us all sorts of transportation feedback because we were very concerned about it. But we did have several community members ask us if this was a possibility. And so, I, I, I think that it's, it's physically closer, and that community actually feels very connected to, just because they're just down where Geiger Grade and Mount Rose connect with that crazy roundabout, yeah.
Well, that's one thing I want, I will certainly, as, as the Chair, as the Chair, then I think, I really just want to commend you and staff as well for, this wasn't even on the radar until community comments came up and said, hey, will you consider this? And it's like, hey, well, let's, let's step back, let's step back, and let's consider. I think that's, that's part of why all that outreach on the other slide, right, really doesn't matter. And when someone comes up with an idea, you know what, we hadn't thought about it, but this, hey, this kind of makes sense. I think it's, I think it's really great, and the Zoning Advisory Committee, really under your leadership, under, under your, your leadership, former Chair, now Trustee Smith, I mean, really just, and you've kept that going, that let's have these meetings, let's be open, let's have people show up. The two of you, Ms. Ford and Mr. Circe, have been here the whole time. So, I just, I want to commend you for that, is people feel like they can come and share their concerns and their ideas around it, and they're, and they're, they're heard, and they're, they're taken into consideration, or there's a really good reason and discussion around why not. And I think that's important as well, so I, I just really appreciate that.
Yeah, so just to continue on, of course, consideration of A3 to Brown is only made possible through the construction of the new Jay Wood Raw Elementary School and the significant overcrowding relief that that will provide to, to Brown Elementary School, even making it possible for us to consider rezoning some students, providing further overcrowding relief to Lenz. Anyway, option 8 here is essentially identical to option 2 previously, where we're moving Area B into Hunsburger, and Area A1 into Hunsburger, leaving Area A2 in Lenz, and then moving Area 3 over into Brown. So, that's what's depicted on this slide. Option 9 on the next slide is the same as the original option 1, in that we're leaving B in Lenz, we're moving A1 and A2 into Hunsburger, of course, doing that little cleanup on Area B, but then the addition here of moving Area A3 over into Brown, same numbers for Hunsburger, just providing a little bit of additional overcrowding relief to Lenz, which, you know, of course, there's lots of discussion, lots of public input around upcoming developments. There's multiple multifamily, high-density residential units being proposed still along Arrow Creek Parkway, near Zalezy Lane, along Virginia Street, up near Moana Nursery. And to the best of our ability, staff, we do take those proposed developments into account in our projections, but, you know, there's always a relatively high degree of uncertainty there. So, especially with Lenz being a smaller model school than Hunsburger or Brown, it has less, it's more sensitive to fluctuations in enrollment. So, the opportunity to provide them just a little bit more cushion when it comes to absorbing potential enrollment increases was, was a benefit to us. And then, all the additional analysis and discussion yielded this as our staff recommendation to the committee just last week. So, just to wrap it up, this is, these are the projected enrollment numbers. You can see, as I just stated, Hunsburger numbers are the same as previously. The Lenz projection, projected numbers go down slightly from what was presented previously, but still are in a very healthy range for elementary school operations. And then also, you can see Brown has the capacity, after the opening of Jay Wood Raw, to absorb those additional students and remains, projects to remain right in a very healthy range for the operations of an elementary school. So, that's a, that's a conclusion of the content that was presented, and ultimately, I'll let Christine and the ladies share how the, the committee saw it. Thank you.
So, Christine Hull, again, for the record, the, the recommendation, we really went back and forth between 8 and 9, and I don't know how, how many of you are really familiar with the area right outside of Hunsburger, but that street actually dead-ends into, you know, federal BLM land. And so, while option B looks geographically closer, that area actually- that area actually really uses Zalesi as their main entry point to their neighborhood. And so we went back and forth a lot about whether or not that was even possible and if it made sense. And really, they wound up being kind of, they circumvented around and almost went past Lens in order to go to Huntsburger. So we really landed on option nine, feeling like the most solid option, especially if you look at the numbers, it really gives a, you know, equal capacities across the board for all three schools. And so that's where we landed, was option nine, which would move, keep area B in Lens and move A one and two to Huntsburger and then area A three to Brown Elementary.
So it would keep all of area B, so that means that little B.
Except for that little cleanup area.
That little cleanup area. That area is currently Lens.
That area is currently Lens, and I think there were three students impacted.
So that area will go, that, those students will go to Huntsburger.
To Huntsburger, yes.
All right, let's start with some public comment. Thank you. First of all, staff, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Really good.
Pablo Nava Duran.
I wanted to say thank you for zoning vice committee, for what the parent feedback and what is better to do. So I think I do believe A one and A two should go to rezone from Lens to Huntsburger. And despite they're being bused to Lens, they go tradition switch to from Lens to Huntsburger. So they're better to be public participation to Huntsburgers. And A three go to Brown Elementary School because despite they had to cross a major freeway to go to Lens. Since also since Brown are leaving overcrowded to the new school, losing students to the Jaywood Elementary School. So they had that one. Area three, the isolated area to go to Brown Elementary School. And it seemed like it, a little problem is that that one is a level iron, but it's not according to the West County Dr. Zoning Vice Committee guidelines. They say that you cannot create ironing, so that iron that had to go across to Brown Elementary School or should be brought but participated to Huntsburger, to Brown Elementary School, so sorry. And A, and area B, area B zero, that the clean area. So that should be rezone to Huntsburger. So we don't want one facing neighborhood to go to different school with each other. And then all the, and then west of area B should remain Lens. In fact, despite being closer to Huntsburger than to Lens, because when you take a closer look of Lens, you seem like it's closer to Huntsburger. But you had to, since you had to cross, you had to go hike to Huntsburger Elementary School, like for kindergarten, fourth grade, second grade, third grade, had to go to walk to Huntsburger Elementary School. That's really painful. It's unsafe issue. And also back here at Huntsburg, you go on the road, that's a public rural land. So that land is a federal land, so you had to go across up to around Moss River and then to Huntsburger Elementary School. So I'm going to say thank you for zoning vice committee. So we want to make sure our parents will lose it. And that, 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 that zoning vice committee took about four or two minutes. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
That's all I have for this item.
Okay, thank you, JJ. Let's bring it back here to the table. There's been some good discussion, questions along the way. Are there others? We'll start with our student trustee, Ms. Victoria.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a comment on number nine. I think when we started this conversation, we saw that it was really close to Huntsburger, that line. And I was so confused when I saw the recommendation. I was like, that doesn't make sense. But I just want to say thank you for like explaining it because that made way more sense on why you guys would move it that way. Thank you.
Yeah, visually it does look like, why is it so close? It should be, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Trustee Smith?
Thanks, President Taylor. So amazing job. Fantastic. Couple of things that I wanted to call out, also for the public to know, is that you maintain the matriculation cycles, which is very important. Can you talk a little bit about that so that everyone understands that the students will not actually change their middle school and high school?
Sure, Christine Holig for the record. So in previous zoning meetings, this whole area, because of the opening of Marcy Hers, the middle school and high school zones were corrected. And so all three of these elementary schools feed into both of those, those middle school and high schools. So this does not impact that at all. So it wasn't even part of the conversation. It was really just relieving the overcrowding at Lens, which is a small school. And as Lauren mentioned, the, it's a different type of school. It was built where some of the classrooms are physically smaller because they're meant for first grades that have a limited number of children in them because that's a state law. And so it was built for class size reduction. And so when we have an overcrowding situation, it's not where every single classroom is the same size. So this particular school, 107% feels like 107% at this particular school. So it's really important and we had a lot of community support for this. In fact, the principal of Huntsburger came to all of our meetings and had several parents asking ahead of time, can I get a variance already? If this is going to happen, can I get a variance to start? So we had a lot of community support. And as we mentioned, it sort of flip flopped throughout. At first they were scared of change, I don't understand what's happening. And as we did all of our community outreach, we had a lot of support.
You are reading my mind, which I'm not at all surprised about. And so that was going to be the next thing I was going to ask you to talk about is that we have incoming kindergartners, we might have people moving to the area. I know it's not a guarantee, but can you talk through what that might look like? If a family says, I respect this is the 2023 school year, what are the options for the upcoming school year?
So we have all the variances sitting on the principal's desk, waiting for the motion this evening. And as soon as the board makes their motion, she will be calling the families and approving the variances. So she currently has empty classrooms. And so that will be a shift from how she's been allocated, right? A whole nother conversation, which is fine. The principal at Lens is prepared for that as well. So they're both, they're both at the meetings. The principal at Lens said, thank you, thank you. And the parents in A one and A two have already submitted variance requests for their students. So, and the Lens principal is willing to keep anyone, you know, the fifth graders, obviously next school year, their third now, so it'll be fourth graders next year, right?
Yes.
Then fifth grade. Did I confuse you enough on that? But he's like, you're more than welcome to stay. And I think some of the parents, after our last meeting, were like, I don't know. You know, they started out, we're staying, and now they're kind of like, I don't know. So it definitely shifted and she already has the variances. She, and she told the parents, as soon as we hear from the board, I will make signatures available.
No pressure. But Bravo, honestly, that's, it's an agile response, it's responsive, it's inclusive in the decisions. And I just think that that's just wonderful from top to bottom. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to ask about variances as well because we know that often comes up. It's so interesting that you really saw the shift from, no, we're staying, we're staying, to, well, maybe we can go a year early. I mean, you know, so my kid can spend their last two years here. I mean, yes, that's just the power of really knowing that they can come and really be a part of the decision-making. Back to that. Trustee Church?
Thank you very much. Again, I've been pretty quiet throughout this because I just hope there's not a quiz because I will not, I'm just amazed that Dr. Taylor completely grasped this. And it's so confusing and you put so much hard work into it. And there's no way I can second guess everything that you've done. It's just incredible. So many variables. The only thing, and I've said it before, it's already just come up tonight. I think that in many cases, the variances need to be looked at extremely favorably unless there's just an absolute reason to say no. What I do hear a little bit sometimes that wasn't mentioned is sometimes it's based on where the parent works or where the other, they have other kids and they have to drop this kid off here, this kid off here. And, you know, so for that reason, they may, geographically, it doesn't make sense, but it makes sense for them because of their work or their other commitments. So my only comment is, I just really, district-wide, I think that variances need to be granted unless there's compelling reasons not to. But other than that, fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Okay, seeing no further discussion, looking for a motion that demonstrates the pleasure of the board in terms of rezoning option nine, that's the recommendation from the hard-working zoning advisory committee and staff. Your trustee church?
Let me pull it up. I moved that the Board of Trustees provide final approval to accept the recommendation of the zoning advisory committee, modifying the school enrollment boundaries for Brown Elementary School, Elizabeth Lens Elementary School, and Ted Huntsburger Elementary School as presented in option nine effective 2023-2024 school year.
Thank you, Trustee Church. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? The second motion from trustee church, second by Clerk Minnetal. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion carries. At the record show, it is unanimous. And again, just on behalf of the Board of Trustees, when I joined the board, people said there are a couple of different items. That when these items come up, there are going to be people out the door and the whole, and one of them was zoning. And that really has just not been the case, really because of the work and the involvement and your willingness to make change, right? When good recommendations that make sense come up. So again, just thank you so much. Thank you for your work.
Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. We're going on to our reports. We're, I always like to just take this out of order so we can hear from the student first. So our student trustee, Victoria Gomez.
I feel nervous today. Oh, my gosh. Student Voice has been working on just like planning for next year and what we're looking forward to having. And we met with Laura, we met with Officer Bakkenham, and Dr. McNeil was able to come to our last meeting. And our students were very excited to see her there, so it was very nice to have her there. Trustee Mayberry was also able to attend to talk about some student positions that we would like to work towards having in the district and like zoning committees and stuff like that in the upcoming school year and that we would like to work towards. And yes, we're very excited for what's to come for Student Voice next year. And as this is my last meeting today, I just wanted to say, oh, my gosh.
I make a motion that it's not her last meeting? Is that on the agenda? Is that out of order? I'm sorry.
As this is my last meeting, I wanted to say how grateful I am for the opportunity that you guys have all given me. Thank you for allowing me to share my voice. Throughout the past two years, it's been a great opportunity. I've learned a lot and experienced. Through COVID, I was given the opportunity to sit on this board and I definitely feel very blessed to be able to have been represent, have been able to represent 62,000 students in our district. Definitely, I learned a lot from students. I learned a lot from all of you and the adults that sit in our school district. And I just wanted to say thank you for always believing in me and supporting me since the start of it. Thank you to Michelle and Laura and our Student Voice team because they always pushed me to do better and they always communicated. We always grew a very strong team to be able to be here and represent all our students. So it was just a great opportunity for the past four years, being in Student Voice. Thank you to all the students in the Washoe County School District that allowed me to represent them and communicate with me to be able to be here and sit here. Through COVID, we saw that there was a lot of tough decisions made. I definitely learned from them and just learned how to better communicate with students and adults when wanting voices to be heard. So I'll definitely take all these experiences in the future as I attend college. And I just wanted to say, I'm very, I was very proud to represent our district because these students are amazing. Literally getting to know so many more students was an amazing opportunity because we have such a diverse population here in Reno. And it was just an amazing opportunity. Thank you for the community for letting me stay here for two years. And I just thank you all so much. I love you guys. Thank you.
Just as a, as a part of your report, I just want to say thank you from us as trustees, our superintendent, our governance team. We, over the past two years, you have helped to make us a better board. I mean, your voice, your courage to speak up when it's like, wait a minute, students don't think that way. I mean, this, the insight that you brought, the way that you push sometimes when you need it to for us to have a different perspective. Again, your courage and the way you proudly wore the mantle, right, of representing the voice of all students in our district. If there was a time when we would deviate from that, you would be a constant reminder that our job is all students. And you made sure all 64, all 62,000-plus students in our district had a voice. And I hope that, I believe that they all felt like they were here a part of it because of how you represented them. Our proud loss from the Washoe County School District is the gain of DePaul University, which is where she's going next year, is the gain of that. We do have, and I think that's worth, absolutely, absolutely. And just so, you know, they don't, they don't, they don't just let anybody into DePaul. So we're very, very proud to have you go and represent us there. We have a little something for you. Come on over here. Big shoes, big shoes, big shoes. Which it does not be all of us. Here, let's get near the camera. You can do this. Oh, she was not even 10 o'clock yet. We're good. We'll have an opportunity to celebrate some more with you when you walk across the stage. Don't be surprised, all the trustees up there will all jump up and we'll, we'll all, we'll fight over who gets to give you your diploma. We'll, we'll all jump and be a part of that. But you have really, you have represented the students so well, so well, and really set a standard, set a standard and hopefully really kind of gave the blueprint for what student, being a student trustee should look like. So we appreciate you so much. Okay, come over here one more time. All right, let's see, let's just, let's just start one end of this side. We'll start with trustee Smith.
Joe says he doesn't want to go after me.
Oh, sorry.
All right, I need those three seconds back, trust me. Okay.
Of course you do.
So all right, we're going to start off with some congratulations. We have some really wonderful things to celebrate here. So Amy Brick, our fifth grade teacher from Nick Polakides Elementary School. She won the 2020 Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching, which is the highest honor for STEM teachers in our country. Also, Ray Swigert was the Outstanding STEM Educator of the Year by the Society of Women Engineers. Amazing. Also, a huge congratulations to the Reno High School We the People team for placing in the top 12 of the nation in the finals of their civics competition. And they are the patriots of the We the People nationally. And that probably tells you what football team I like. Moving on to also staying on to Reno High, a huge congratulations, their ROTC Robotics Team placed in the top 16 at the World Robotics Competition in Dallas, Texas. Amazing. So I attended some small group meetings related to behavior, shared legal and other matters. My school visits were to Innovations High School, where I learned about big picture learning. We have the only big picture learning school in all of Nevada. So Principal Michael Bradley and the team, they lead a really engaging program there. Students are called scholars. They do internships all year long to learn about different industries, professions. They guide their way through the learning. So I just saw that love, and I saw that care, and I saw that passion. I also watched a beautiful, I'm going to try not to cry here, I watched a beautiful dedication of a new rock garden at Smith Ridge STEM Academy. It's a memorial to fifth grade teacher Sarah Hesher. She passed away unexpectedly, and the school honored her with a living memorial, and that was very, very moving. I also attended an end of year event for our principals, which was very fun. And then that same day, celebrated the graduation of 42, fifth, 43, fifth and sixth graders who completed the dual language program at Jesse Beck Elementary School, which was a beautiful ceremony, and I am just a huge proponent of dual language education. The last couple things in my seconds is the Business of Education Luncheon, which I hope another trustee picks up on. And our district being an Intuit Prosperity District, phenomenal. And then also the Junior Achievement Gala in recognition of Dr. Angie Taylor, that picture's up here. And I want to lead with this. Oh, sorry.
All right, hurry, hurry, hurry. We didn't get, we cut it out last time, so.
No, I know, I know. And, and this is, this is the very last one, is that all of these things represent the wonderful things happening in our district. Attending both of these events and seeing hundreds upon hundreds of people in our community standing, cheering, and celebrating the excellence of the Washoe County School District and our President, Dr. Angie Taylor.
Well, thank you, we're going, Joe. He's looking like, no, I said they want to go next.
It's always hard following.
Beth is always going to just be Beth. Trustee Smith, I'm sorry.
things just involving like school CTE and things like that, and it's actually prior to today. So I mean, definitely want to revisit some things with him, and yeah, had a really good conversation with him. Visited the Reno Sparks Stadium Colony in Pearmer Lake, that was some of their leadership there, and just kind of just talked and got a good pulse of how the, the community is, and it was really enlightening, a really awesome community there. Visited Desert Heights, great school, awesome principal, and they just installed a vending book machine, which was pretty nifty. Yeah, never heard of that, but cool, awesome. Also, had opportunity to speak with someone to volunteer, the parents that volunteer there, which I'm really happy to see. It really shows getting back to a sense of normalcy, having parents back in our schools, and it was really, really enlightening. Had a really brief conversation with 40 minutes with a particular mom there, so it was awesome. Yeah, and attended the WA meeting, got to meet the new president, got to meet with more educators and get a good pulse of, you know, what's going on with our educators, and how we're, we're excited to start with our incoming superintendent. And, so yeah, and I would be wearing this girlac shirt, but it would look like a crop top on me. So.
And there's got to be a board policy against that. There's just got to be one.
I mean, I'm pretty progressive with my clothes, but you know, I will not, I will not go that far. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much, Trustee Rodriguez. Clerk Minneto, yes.
Yesterday, I went with Trustee Church and Vice President Nicolette to the TMCC presentation, and they were wonderful. It's, it just, those little kids just work so hard. And then on Saturday, I went to the HUG farewell, which was kind of an extra treat for me, because my daughters, who are alumni, got to go with me, and one came from far, far away, Las Vegas. I went with superintendent, with our superintendent to rise, what a delightful adult education, just a delightful school. Went to the Reed JROTC, I have a hard time saying that, with our superintendent. And, let's see, I went to Bud Beasley, visited there, went to HUG JROTC, and Spanish Springs JROTC, both with our wonderful superintendent. Let's see, went to Sparks JROTC with our wonderful superintendent. And if I go here, I think there were a couple more, went with our superintendent to Worcester, and that was the day after, the Worcester JROTC event, which was absolutely wonderful. Got to see one of my best friend's daughters there, and she was carrying a flag, I was very proud. And went to the business luncheon, which was fabulous, and we can go on about that. And, oh, no. Let's see what I do here. I went, nope, that wasn't it. Okay, that's all I'm saying right now, I did get to Esther Bennett, though. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you Clerk Minneto, yes, and your shirt does fit, yes, thank you. Dr. Nicolette.
Well, it's, it's been a month, so I'm going to really try and consolidate, which is an art for me, but I am, visited the Coral Academies, the elementary and middle schools, and it's always just a joy to, to meet the students from our, our sponsored charter schools and, and staff and administration. I'm not going to go through all the schools, and I'm sorry to leave anyone out, but I had a, a very informative visit at Anderson Elementary with Principal Michael Martindale, and we together sat down and discussed the Davidson Framework for Teaching, and how it's used in evaluations. And I, I will say that it is a, it is a time intensive, it is a thorough approach to looking at, I would have to say, almost all aspects of teaching, from a qualitative to a quantitative standpoint, and it's used for school improvement, it's used for individual reflection for teachers, and for improvement plans, and it was just, it was very enlightening, and I really appreciate that Principal Martindale took the time to, to help me with that, to understand it. And I want to say that I did many of the JROTC graduation ceremonies at the high schools, and one of the things that stuck with me the most is, is these kiddos and, and their futures, and, and what they are so excited to be doing, whether they're, they're continuing in their high school as, as a sophomore, freshman, or senior, and then those that are graduating, and, and the excitement they have for their future. And I also had the opportunity of, of sitting in on the accreditation processes for the JROTC programs, and the continuous improvement plans that they put together are, are amazing. They ranged from everything from fitness to engaging their students, and how to reengage, excuse me, after COVID. These plans were, were a marketing genius, and how they did food drives and clothing drives. And the one that stuck out to me was, was a, an internet safety approach that was put together that they could share, the Galena JROTCs could, could share with the middle schools up in Incline Village, and, sorry, Incline Village High School JROTC, and the program that they devised for internet safety and social media, and things that you should know to keep yourself safe. And they were going to do a presentation at the middle school. I've just had a good time, and I need more to explain it all, but I'm finished, thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Nicolette. We had a little grace today, because it's been a month, so. Trustee Mayberry.
Thank you, Madam President, and again, I want to say farewell to Victoria, and you're a shining star here in the district.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to miss my right, my right hand. Yeah, it's been busy for me, too, and I, my dear colleague, Trustee Smith, gave a few shout outs to some of the teachers I was going to that teach in, in my district, so thank you for, for covering that. I've, since I've been appointed, in, in November, I have visited 39 of my 55 schools.
All right.
The last couple of weeks have been extremely busy. I'll just say, I've, I've visited Lincoln Park, Dilworth, Dietrichson, Whitehead, had an opportunity to visit one of our charter schools, Ace Charter School, earlier this week, and learned about a lot of the career and construction opportunities for our students. One of the highlights for me was the AACT tour I had with Principal McMaster last week. I found out that we had a, you know, we have a bakery at that, at that school, and coffee, and so I encourage all of you to connect with me individually for a cup of coffee at some point. I attended Brown Elementary School, along with their Masterpiece Night last week with, with our superintendent. Had an opportunity to visit Spanish Springs High School Art Night as well. Spent some time last week at Bond Middle School, and you know, I don't think I need to tell you that school needs a little work, so let's keep that on the radar and get those repairs and renovations made. Had an opportunity to visit Reed High School, as well as participate in the Reed High School Food Pantry that opened up, which is really orchestrated by three students serving the Reed High School community. Also had the opportunity to attend Innovations High School with my colleague, Dr. Nicolette, last week, on the event side. Had, again, Washoe Education Event, the Edon Table, many, many of you attended that, and it was a great opportunity to hear about some of the school district's partnerships with Intuit, Panasonic, and as well as our recovery efforts in terms of the pandemic and that. Had wonderful, enjoyed the evening honoring you, President Taylor, at Junior Achievement. Also attended a few high school ROTC graduations. And I went to the interfaith prayer breakfast meeting, prayed for all of you.
Yeah, it was good, it was good. It was a good event.
I think that's kind of a summary. I'm sure I missed out a few things. Yeah, yeah. And I did also have the opportunity to meet with a few educators and, and hear their perspectives, which is always helpful to kind of get, have an educator bend your ear, and you learn a lot from our, our staff that's on the front line, so thank you for listening.
Thank you, Trustee Mayberry. Just going to jump right in, some of the things we already mentioned, the Edon Board of Ed Lunch, just a, a big appreciation to Mike Kachmierski and then Katie Simon-Holland for continuing to do that, to show the partnerships with the community, and to show the community the good work that the district is doing. Thank you, thank you for those of you who attended and helped to celebrate my Hall of Fame induction for Junior Achievement, Junior Achievement. It's been, it's been a month, it seems like a long time ago, but we were there for the, I was there with the superintendent for the Incline Theater, the, the whole remodel renovation, it is absolutely beautiful, beautiful. And to be there with the foundation representatives to, who really paid for it, I mean, I forgot exactly how much, it was a, it was hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it looks like it's Duckfield Foundation, right? Duckfield Foundation, and it looks like it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, what a just a beautiful, beautiful facility. I was able to go to the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission meeting just to thank them, thank them for their work and for their continued involvement in helping us keep our schools and our students and our teachers safe. Three JROTC award ceremonies, McQueen, North Valleys, and HUG High School. North Valleys, they were particularly appreciative, because remember, we ran out of here two weeks ago at the end of our meeting, and so I ran out there anyway, and they were just, we knew you guys had a meeting, thank you for being here, and so it was just an honor to be out there to represent folks. Had some school visits, school visits, Melton, McQueen, Wunamuka, these are the ones I just went through these last few weeks. And actually, Polakita's not in my district, but the principal used to be in my district, and he's always harassing me. Don's always, you don't visit me anymore because I'm not in your district. So I went out there and visited, and had, and had a really good time out there, big school, busy school, but he does a great job out there. When I was at Tolls, I'm just going to keep this thing moving, when I was at Tolls, I actually met a couple of our foster grandparent volunteers, and they invited me to the, to the, the, not just, it was foster grandparent and another senior volunteer program, invited me to their annual luncheon. And they were very surprised when I showed up. It was amazing, it was fantastic, just to really celebrate those seniors who are involved in our schools, and then other, other important roles in our community for other seniors, mostly who need help. It was, I just had, just had a great time. Papa John, he's the one who, he's, he's, he's the one who invited me, so Papa John, I got you on the, on the agenda. I got you, I got you on the minutes of the meeting. See, just some more, congratulations, Galena Girls, second for state swimming, right, Galena Girls, third in state track and field. There were some regional titles as well, but I, I know I wouldn't have time to do everything, so I just went right to state. And McQueen Boys, first place state track and field, Golden Lancers. And then the final thing I'll, I'll mention, because other things have been mentioned, is I got a chance to, I did, I saw some of my colleagues at Goodbye HUG High School. Last time on that campus, saw a lot of people from the past, and I saw all of my English teachers from HUG High School, and they did say that I represent them well, so I feel good about that. All right, Madam Superintendent.
President.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I was going all the way back around, I'm sorry, Trustee Church, I'm sorry, I jumped in in front of you, please forgive me.
No, 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 that gives me more time to go over my notes, no problem. I did attend a number of events, and one of the more inspirational ones was a den, I think that's right, a den of Cub Scouts in my district, and just wonderful, I think scouting's a wonderful program, and I don't want to poach on other districts, but I'm more than happy to come out and talk to any group like that, scouting or otherwise. This coming week, I do have a number of meetings scheduled with some nonprofit community leaders, so I look forward to that. Victoria, for your photograph, my padre tie is now permanently in your photograph, the Padres, the almost first place Padres, and we're going to get to watch them tonight, so I, we're getting out of here on time, unlike the Giants that lost 13 to 2, I believe.
Excuse me, sir, can you stay on the agenda?
Okay, all right. Besides, that's going to cost me votes, that's going to cost me votes. On the agenda, I do have a handout, as usually I do, about future agenda items, including, as I've had on there before, maybe contemplating a review of the Police Department and some of their issues, not bad issues, but just some of, you know, how, how we deal with that. Speaking of logos, a group did use our Washoe County School District logo on a political ad, that's a no, no, it's proprietary, but I applaud them for immediately retracting that and for apologizing for that use. And I think on my notes, that's really all I wanted to cover, since I can't rub in anymore my tie, but.
No, that's off the agenda.
That's off the agenda. So, yeah, I appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Church. I also forgot that, I was at the prayer breakfast, we were there together with the superintendent, it's good to, good to do that, to represent and pray for all of us. Now, Madam Superintendent, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam President. So I was able to spend a couple of days with incoming Superintendent Enfield, which was really great. We have about four more days in which we will conduct our transition. I was able to attend a thank you breakfast for our school nurses, and so I want to make sure that we just say thanks to our school nurses and all of their love and dedication to our students throughout this time. I was able to attend the Men Dive Art Show, where I actually was able to purchase a picture for Dr. Enfield for her new office. I attended JROTC events at Spanish Springs High School, HUG, Reed, with all of the trustees. I was able to attend the Bike to School, and no, I did not ride the bike, at Lena Juniper Elementary School, but it was absolutely fantastic. I attended the Student Advisory Council Meeting over at Dilworth, that's always fun to catch up. I was able to attend, along with Trustee Mayberry, the Art Masterpiece over at Brown Elementary. I think this is probably going to be one of their best fundraisers for their art program. All of the funds for this program go right back into their art program. I was able to give the land acknowledgement at our Paiute Language Bowl, in which Reed High School, North Valleys High School, and Spanish Springs High School participated, and Reed High School was the winner of our Paiute Language Bowl for this year. I was also able to be a judge at Jesse Hall Elementary for We the People. If you ever want to see some highly intelligent fifth graders, take a look at our Constitution, go over to Jesse Hall, because they were absolutely fabulous. I was on the platform party for TMCC, Technical Science Graduation, which was awesome, because we always have our TMCC high school students receive their AAs before they receive their high school diploma, so that was a lot of fun. I attended and participated in my last WCSD Academy, thank you to Dr. Parks for organizing that. Attended a HUG High School farewell event with Trustee Minneto and Vice President Nicolette, and the renowned, everywhere we went, everybody was calling out for President Taylor, so we were able to also sign the library. And then I also. And then I also want to thank all of our trustees for wearing our high school T-shirts. I was not able, I was going to have to change every fifteen minutes today. So you all helped me out, so thank you so very much. We have Inspire, we have Innovations, we have Truckee Meadows, we have Wooster, we have North Star, we have Gerlack, we have Rise, and we have Pacolo. So thank you to everyone for helping us out.
Thank you. And thanks to Tammy for most of us giving us a school that's in our district. For most of us, not all, but certainly most of us. But they're all our schools, so we're proud of all of them. Okay, thank you for just sharing the work, sharing the work that we're doing in the community and with our schools and so on. Closing general public comments, JJ.
Andrew Wilson.
Welcome, Mr. Wilson.
Hello.
Okay, you'll have three minutes and the clock's right up there or so.
Okay.
All right.
All right. My name is Drew, and first off, I'd like to thank all of you guys for your service to the community and the education. These past couple of years have been tough on all of us and tough on you, so I just really want to thank you guys for all the work you put in for us. I'm here with some of my fellow classmates from McQueen High School. We're all seniors and we're all looking to improve the environment for the classes below us. Eating is an integral part, or an integral part of any person's life. And as any, as the students who are pursuing an education, we deserve to have a reasonable amount of time to not only eat, but also have a mental break from learning and time to enjoy lunch. Kids get thirty to fifty percent of their calories from school lunches. On top of that, approximately sixty percent of high school students nationally skip breakfast each morning. Their lunch is the first meal of the day and is arguably the most important. Children that struggle with food insecurity, which is very few ways to access food and little availability, are more likely to develop anxiety, depression, bipolar disorder, and suicidal tendencies, per a recent study from the Food Research and Action Center. It's unfortunate when students have to choose food over education. We see this happen from the amount of tardies daily in our school. For the last month of April, for the period after lunch, there was an average of fifty-six point four five tardies per day, which then led to an average of two hundred eighty-two point two five tardies per week. And then a total of tardies for the whole month of one thousand one hundred twenty-nine tardies. This data then proves that students are taking time out of their education to get extra lunch. I want to thank you guys once more and then a few of my classmates will take off where I left off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Luke Savala.
Is it Savala? Savala. Welcome, Mr. Savala.
Thank you. All right, so I'm just going to pick up where you left off.
Okay.
So again, this is only the period after lunch and not including absences. Also, having one person walk in late to a class is a distraction in and of itself. If you take the average amount of tardy students and count for thirty seconds of class time being taken away when the student walks in, that is at least twenty-three minutes of class time being taken away from teachers across the school. McQueen is not the only school with this problem. One solution used in a high school in Ogden, Utah, lowered tardies by giving students with less tardies more time for lunch. Students that kept their grades up, as well as reducing the amount of tardies, received an extra thirty minutes of lunch. Attendance records show that the average number of tardies per day dropped thirty-two percent after the program was put into place. We aren't necessarily asking to have lunch be thirty minutes longer. However, we humbly ask the board trustees to make a longer requirement for the minimum time length for lunch. And we recommend forty minutes based on our research. We know that schools themselves decide on how long lunches are. However, we also know that the school board has the power to implement a rule stating a minimum time requirement for lunches. And I'll just let the next person pick up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Savala.
Landon Smith.
Welcome, Mr. Smith.
My name's Landon Smith and I'm a senior at McQueen High School. I'd like to thank all of you for all your hard work and I appreciate every one of you for everything you do. We conducted a survey at our school with six hundred and twenty-nine students across the district about this current lunch situation. And ninety-eight point six of the students believed that we should have longer lunches, while ninety-seven point eight percent of students felt rushed during lunchtime. A two thousand and fifteen study from Harvard School of Public Health showed that with a five-minute increase of lunchtime within K-12 schools, that it had a thirteen percent decrease in entree waste, twelve percent decrease in vegetable waste, and ten percent decrease in milk waste. Personally, every time after lunch, I have a stomach ache from eating so fast and that distracts me from learning. With the case of lunch being short for many students, there are some students that don't have the option to finish their lunch. Therefore, some students attempt to finish in their teachers' classrooms. Here are some of our teachers' thoughts on eating in class and longer lunches. Out of our entire school, thirty teachers allow eating in their classroom, while twenty-two don't allow eating. Some teachers have specific reasons for allowing students to eat in their class after lunch, such as nutrition is important to brain power, students don't have time during lunch if they had to take a test or meet with a teacher, and students who are hungry have an immense loss in concentration. I'd like to hand it off to my friend Andrew. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Andrew Brazula.
Is it Brazula?
It's Brizwala.
Brizwala. Welcome, Mr. Brizwala.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you guys so much for taking the time out of your day to listen to this. The teachers' reasoning for saying no was that their classroom would be dirty, it was against the rules, it's a distraction to the class, and students can step out of class to eat. However, if students were given a necessary timeframe to eat lunch outside of class, teachers wouldn't feel pressured to break the rules and allow students to eat in their classes. Some teachers stated that with a short lunch, teachers don't have enough time to interact with their students or their coworkers. Obviously, there are more ways than one to counter the malnutrition and negative effects on the mental health that come with not giving students enough time to eat lunch. But from the evidence that we have gathered, it's clear that longer lunches are the most optimal option. One teacher mentioned schools have nutrition breaks or A and B lunches to counteract malnutrition among students. First off, nutrition breaks, which are essentially just breaks throughout the day to eat, pose some major issues. The problem with nutrition breaks is that all the questions that, wait. Sorry. Throughout the day to eat pose some major issues. The problem with nutrition breaks is that all the questions that come up, how will students, how will students who don't normally bring food to eat during lunch these times? Will the school provide food for them? How many nutrition breaks will occur throughout a day and how long will they be? Those are just a few of the questions that come up with the idea of nutrition breaks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brizwala.
Addison Mohanti.
Help me with your last name, sir. Mohanti? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Adarsh Mohanti. I am a senior at McQueen High School. And once again, I'd like to thank you all for hearing us out. And another solution that one of our teachers came up with was an A and B lunch schedule, where essentially one group of students has lunch A at one time and another group of students has lunch B at another time. And A and B lunch schedules bring up some issues. So schedule problems will almost be guaranteed as half of the students will have different times for their classes than the other half. And at a school like McQueen, where our schedules are also different every day, this would cause even more chaos. Not only will there be scheduling issues, but focusing will become more difficult. If one group of students has lunch at a certain time while another group of students is studying, then it'll become much harder to learn and concentrate with all the noise and commotion coming from students at lunch. This also may tempt students to skip classes. They would be able to easily blend in with another group of students at lunch. The final issue that comes with an A and B lunch schedule is the separation of friends. For many, lunch is the only time where they can enjoy hanging out or seeing their friends at all during the school day. Making an A and B lunch for, or A and B schedule for lunches would cause many friends to be split, which would guarantee upset students. In conclusion, we have come here to ask you to implement a minimum requirement of forty minutes for lunches across Washoe County High School. We believe this is a necessary change and would love to see it to come to life within the next two school years. Although ninety-three point one percent of students from our previous survey wanted a longer lunch than forty-five minutes, it would be hard to adjust the schedules. We understand that. Thank you all so much for your time and we appreciate all that you have done. I hope you all have an amazing day.
Thank you, Mr. Donkey. He should put some tissue there if you need some too, by the way. No, it's okay. Not just being helpful. It's just that time of year.
I'm so sorry.
No, no, please, quite all right. We appreciate your being here. To all of our students from, I know we have more public comments. To all of our students from McQueen High School, our superintendent would just like to address you for a moment, so please.
First of all, I am so proud of you all. It takes a lot to come down here and you advocate and you do it respectfully. You all are amazing. I feel like I just heard a We the People competition.
Ooh, what a surprise, right?
I kind of figured that.
What a surprise.
Kind of figured that. But what I would suggest, and this goes right along with our Student Advisory Council, what I would suggest you do is to follow up with your Student Advisory Council representative at McQueen High School and to maybe start a conversation with your administration. Because McQueen High School has an olympus campus, right? And so a lot of times our students leave for lunch and a little bird told me that the new In-N-Out Burger is a pretty popular place. So I just want to say thank you so much. You guys are awesome. And I hope you are able to come back and let us know what solutions you were able to come to. So thank you and please drive home safely.
Thank you so much for being here. Good job. Good job. All right. Do you have more public comment?
Aiden Fox Cruz.
I'm sorry, say again?
Aiden Fox.
Mr. Fox Cruz, welcome. Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you. Is this thing already on? Cool.
Yes, it is.
I'll begin now. Hello, my name is Aiden Fox Cruz. I'm a current senior at Robert McQueen High School. I'm a national representative for our speech and debate team in the Sagebrush District. And I will be attending the University of Nevada Reno for nursing next year. Before I begin, I'd like to thank the board for your representation of our district, which I've spent my entire academic career in. You have done an excellent job, especially considering current events in the pandemic. Also, I would like to especially thank Representative Gomez for representing the student body. Thank you for your hard work. Now, to bring to attention, what we are here specifically to shed light on today is the misinterpretations of the Establishment Clause in the unconstitutional precedent sent by two Supreme Court cases. Angel versus Vitale and Santa Fe Independent School District versus Doe, which have each made it near impossible for students like ourselves to organize religious clubs on public campus. We'd also like to examine on a state level Nevada law three eight eight point oh seven seven, which is designed to guarantee the First and Fourteenth Amendment rights for students, but in our opinion has not been upheld properly. Nationally, the First Amendment's Establishment Clause states that Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion. This provision, unfortunately however, is often misunderstood as prohibiting religious expressions in public school as well, or sorry, for prohibiting religious expressions in public school as well seen as their government institutions technically. Many school officials mistakenly believe religious expression would violate the so-called separation of church and state, a phrase which, by the way, is not found in the Constitution at all. What is often misused in conjoinedment with the Establishment Clause. And as a result, school officials across our nation, whether intentionally or through misinformation, have denied students and teachers their constitutional right of religious speech and expression under the guise that the Constitution requires them to do so. Since most religions like my own are majorly founded on expressions of faith and conversion, then restricting our ability to preach in school is an infringement of that freedom of religious practice. In my experience personally, as a member of Grace Church Reno and one of the organizers of Move Ministries, I started the Move Club at McQueen High School. The school allowed me to hold the club in the school gym and was even gracious enough to let us use some of their sports equipment. They did, however, warn me that I could not preach about God. This restriction nullified the purpose of my club and felt like a direct attack onto my religious freedom. So with that experience now, I'd like to passionately address the board in saying that until something is done about these precedents and a reduction is made in the amount of red tape preceding the establishment of a club for religious study or religious study in classrooms in general, then the religious freedoms of Nevada students as a whole will continue to be infringed upon. Next, my partners will elaborate specifically on diversity in schools and the wants of the student body. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Robert Wagner.
Welcome, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you. Hello, I am Robert Wagner the fourth. I am also a senior at McQueen High School. And I plan to go to UNRAT to study education with a focus on history. So this kind of touches near and dear to my heart. I was specifically talking about the diversity that comes with religion and the lack of diversity currently offered by schools when they limit religious clubs at school. Right now, the only real club that has any sort of religious context is the Fellowship of Christian Athletes that meets at McQueen High School. And that is an evangelical Christianity group. And they're the only one that meets. And they cover a very kind of broad, but also sometimes specific belief system of an Abrahamic religion. And I think that by only allowing them to gather instead of groups like Catholic people or Islamic people or Hindu people or all of the hundreds of religions, it's really like limiting the expression of each individual student. And it prevents them from being able to not only educate others about their religion, change misconceptions, but also gather more people to their religion, which is very central to almost all faiths, is the idea of growing their religion and spreading their word. I believe that we have to allow people to express themselves in certain ways, just as how we have allowed people to have certain clubs like the LGBTQ Club, which is very prevalent in several schools, where the idea is that they can express themselves and express their ideals and speak with each other, while not always forcing it down to other people, which is the great idea about clubs, because not everyone has to attend a club. It's by your own volition. And so I believe that it doesn't infringe on the connection of church and state. Because if we were forcing everyone to practice a certain religion, that would be different. But it's just giving the options. And the lack of option currently limits diversity from everyone. And I think that needs to change.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Will Reno.
Mr. Reno. I won't even comment. Welcome.
I get it all the time. It's fine. Hello, like you said, my name is Will Reno. I am a senior at McQueen High School, graduating under the Global Studies Program, and I'm also an Eagle Scout. I am going to be studying most likely music education in the future, so this is a very prevalent board for me. I'm here to talk about the curriculum in schools and the religious role that they have in that, specifically in history classes. Religion is an important part, not only in students' personal lives, but it also plays a major role in both world history and United States history. As we all know, the United States was migrated to by pilgrims for, in majority part, the sake of religious freedoms, something that should remain in place throughout every avenue of American life and especially in the school system. So we did a survey of McQueen students. We got sixty-two responses to see how they felt religious representation in their history courses curriculum was handled. An overwhelming majority of them, seventy-four point two percent, said that they thought that they could learn more or that religious representation could have been handled better. There are major gaps in our school's curriculum about religion. This is an example near and dear to me because I'm a member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. So the school curriculum under United States history almost entirely skips over the Mormon pioneers, that portion of Westward Expansion. Our history doesn't mention once the Missouri Executive Order forty-four, also known as the Mormon Extermination Order. This was the only example that I can find in United States history where it was not only legal to kill somebody because of their religion, but it was also encouraged by the government to do so. These events culminated in events such as Hans Mill, where eighteen men and boys were killed by Missouri State Guardsmen, some of whom were killed after surrendering. Here's a quick quote from one of the Missouri State Guardsmen. "You are damn Mormons. That is offense enough. Within ten days, every Mormon must be out of Missouri, or men, women, and children will be shot down indiscriminately. No mercy will be shown. It is the order of the governor. They should all be exterminated, and by God, you will be." So I would say that major religious discrimination through United States history is worth learning about. I am in no way inciting that my religion is victimized in the modern day. I think that playing modern victim to past events defeats the purpose of my religion to teach others. So this is just one example from my personal religious history. And I bring this up as an example to talk about the other multitudes of other religions who have impacted history that we do not talk about. In conclusion, the lack of religious representation and teaching within school curriculum is a disservice not only to our schoolchildren, but also to the religions that are being overlooked. We ask that the Washoe County School District Board reconsider the restrictions on religious clubs in schools and in the curriculum in at least high school-level history courses to include more religious representation and exploration on their role in their respective area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reno. Again, just amazing job, young man, for being there. I don't know if you guys coordinated this to be here at the same night, but you did and it just happened to be that way. But really though, just, I mean, you're taking your time to be here. You presented yourselves professionally, eloquently, said what was on your heart and on your mind and really gave us some things to consider, I guess. I just can't appreciate that enough. That's really student voice in action. So thank you, thank you. And just let the record reflect that McQueen High School is in District E. That's my district, just, oh, NG. NG, NG. NG, NG. Really, really thank you so much. Couldn't be more proud. Couldn't be more proud.
Richard Spadone?
Is it Spadone?
I say Spadoni.
Spadoni. Welcome, Mr. Spadoni.
And I'm actually always being upstaged by McQueen because my daughter's graduated from there too.
Though, so you can. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much, Lanthers. We appreciate you. Mr. Spadoni, welcome, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam President, Madam Superintendent. Best wishes in your retirement. I actually, and Board of Trustees, excuse me, I'm actually an occupational therapist that works for the district. Um, I'm not sure if many people are familiar with occupational therapy, but we are a related service in the district. Uh, unfortunately, through the eleven years that I've been with the district, we've always been understaffed. When I started here, we've been, we had about five, I mean fifteen, uh, therapists. At this time, we're up to about, uh, thirty, but we've always had difficulty staffing. Um, we unfortunately, this year, um, you know, I should say in the last few years, have kind of used a piecemeal approach between district employees. Half of our employees are district employees, or less than half are district employees, about fifteen. Um, we use independent contractors and we use travelers, traveling therapies. Uh, the reason I was compelled to come here today is one of the budget items, uh, two point one five, I believe is probably a good portion, that two, uh, two point six million dollars is related to special ed trying to get occupational therapists to see the students. Unfortunately, this year is the first year that we haven't been able to see all our students, and it just pains us that there's two hundred and twenty-nine kids that never received occupational therapy services that were dictated by their IEP this year. And so, they never received it. We often start out the year lacking services. Um, at the beginning of this year, there was over four hundred kids that never received services. Um, and then slowly, we're able to hire. My, our boss, Chris Muflegovit, is fantastic. She's trying her best to hire people. We know the heads of special ed are aware of the situation, but it just continues. The, the, we're losing people to other districts that have solved the problem. They actually sometimes pay more, so people are moving. Uh, makes a lot of, uh, if you look at Lyon County, I'd make more money to go to Lyon County. Um, but there are many reasons that we're, we're losing people, we're unable to attract people. It needs to be addressed. I know, I would ask you guys to come and investigate the situation, uh, to come out and talk to us. But it just pains us that so many students who could benefit from our services, it's a federally mandated program, are not getting those services. The district is, of course, uh, offering comprehensive, uh, comp ed, we call it, when they can't get that. Uh, many families choose not to accept it, you know, it's their choice not to accept it. But it just pains us that these kids that need our services are unable to get them, and we're not, uh, always attracting and retaining staff. So, uh, and I would say that unfortunately, McQueen is one of the schools that does not have an OT at this time. So, there's twenty schools that have no OT coverage at all. So, I would ask you to look into it further. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spadoni. Thank you for your work. It's really important for those kids in the district.
Melanie Sutton?
I think, it looks like she's left.
John Appolito?
Welcome, Mr. Appolito.
My name is John Appolito, Protect Nevada Children, and you can find fifteen hundred of us on Facebook at Protect Nevada Children. At the WCSD Superintendent Forum on April twentieth, this question was read to the candidates. Quote, "When it comes to collecting, storing, sharing student personal information data and schoolwork, Nevada is one of the worst states in the country. We have two massive databases that collect, store, and share student discipline, medical, counseling, and psychiatric data, Infinite Campus and Sane. This data is never deleted. Do you have any concerns with how all this data may affect the future of our children?" End quote. In responding to the question, the Superintendent of Public Instruction Joan Eubarth said, quote, "All of what the author wrote here is true," end quote. The video of Ms. Eubarth's interview has been removed by the district, but I can assure you, this is exactly what was read to her and exactly what she said. All this student data for all public and public charter school student lives forever in Infinite Campus, maybe two thousand data fields. But remember, some of these individual data fields can have years of data in them. It's entered by multiple district employees, and some of this data is very subjective. A subset of the Infinite Campus database is uploaded to the Nevada Department of Education's Sane database. The Sane database contains the most incriminating student data, i.e. discipline, counseling, medical, and psychiatric data. This database contains maybe a thousand data fields, and like Infinite Campus, this data is never deleted. A retired Nevada Superintendent of Schools told us the federal government has access to this data. The federal government spent about one billion dollars to ensure forty-six states have databases that are compatible. Nevada took thirteen and a half million of this. Infinite Campus, that was the first one, the big one, the most massive database ever created on students in human history. And no one really knows how simply the existence of Infinite Campus and Sane may affect the future of Nevada students. That is why I keep coming to these meetings, and you guys haven't done anything that I've noticed yet. Washoe County School District has been telling Protect Nevada Children for years, they're trying to get some of the Infinite Campus data deleted over time. Several months ago, when Infinite Campus was at this meeting, they told us, quote, "No one has ever asked us to delete any Infinite Campus data." Maybe you guys can explain the discrepancy.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
You're welcome. I'll wait if you could explain it.
Shannon Coley?
Welcome, Ms. Coley.
Hi, I don't know, did everybody get the handouts? Okay. Okay. Hi, um, in President Taylor's web ad, she says that people are distorting the truth and twisting facts and attacking her for teaching civil rights. And several board members who spoke last night said, "The public is spreading made-up narratives as a distraction." One representative said, "We are getting op-eds out there with accurate information." This is why I must speak out today, because not one media outlet will post the following facts. The public only knows what we have seen directly on WCSD's own website and at board meetings. Here is the truth of what we have seen. The supplemental benchmark curriculum that was proposed has nothing to do with teaching civil rights, accurate history, or having uncomfortable conversations about race. They were about creating social activists, where ten, five to ten-year-olds were taught about the privileged versus the oppressed class. One particular lesson tells eight-year-olds to think about their role they can play in disrupting inequities. Eight-year-olds! The second thing we have seen is the Equity and Diversity Teacher Training Manual. There is too much to cite, I will only read a few highlights. Page sixteen, Kimberly Crenshaw is quoted. She, uh, she wrote the book Critical Race Theory: Key Writings. But there's no CRT in WCSD. And when talking to teachers about interacting with BIPOC students, they say, "We smile and give them a hug and tell them to eat our food and listen to our stories, and we teach them to read our words." Here's another quote. "White people often speak in a kind of racial code using communication patterns with each other that encourage a kind of white racial bonding." In the White Supremacy Culture article, it lists characteristics which promotes white supremacy thinking as power hoarding, individualism, objectivity, worship of the written word. And finally, transformative SEL, which is being taught here. Some quotes from their website. "U.S. cultural norms promote materialism. These norms are even more problematic when wealth and whiteness are, is, are accepted as indicators of success, fostering a sense of white racial entitlement. Higher social class predicts increased unethical behavior." This is only a small fraction of the rhetoric from the manual. So, who is really distorting the facts and spreading made-up narratives? I have handouts so you can no longer say that you haven't seen divisive materials in Washoe County School District.
Thank you, Ms. Coley.
Pablo Nava Duran?
Welcome, Mr. Duran.
I want to say I do agree with all the students in regard to like lunch break and then to relation freedom in the classroom. So, I want to talk about the lunch rooms. Uh, so, having like a longer lunch room that create a, a longer, a shorter class time disruption, unless we had to maybe change. So, high school starts at eight AM and then lunchtime typically like eleven-thirty to twelve, and then literally, we got to school at two. So, if you want a longer lunchtime, like for example, from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty, then we had to get out of school by three o'clock instead of two-thirties. So, that's very difficult, and I think they took years to imagine what the lunchroom looked like for the students. And then, second of all, so, I want to thank for, uh, student, for relation students, so, to a part to relation. So, I think that this is a, I learned a U.S. history, a little world history. So, in world history, we talked about relation, Christianity, different type, type of teacher, Christianity, and then there's, uh, Jews, Islamics, all kinds of stuff. And then, and then U.S. history, we talked about Christianity to the West, so because of God, it's Christianity. So, if you have not talked about, it's Mormons of New York that founded New York and then to Missouri and then then to, to Utah, so, our neighboring states. So, that's great. I think I should learn more about that, that one. And in my perspective, I think like we should like cover like Mexican-American war, but really, it's a short time history, so, let's give, uh, to that. So, we want to teach about two histories, so, not, uh, not to waste our history. So, I want, I think we can expand our history and that include all the people regardless of relation, color, skin, race, and even immigration status, along the immigration history, like Chinese scut in nineteen sixty-four, and Christian cold law, and any kind of thing. And it, it, uh, expanding of a history, uh, that was show diversity history, it's not CRT. It's a fact of U.S. history. And also, as I want to say, like, we want to keep nineteen seventy-six independent of country because we're our first, uh, United States, it's our first country, uh, the independent from condemnation, no other countries look like that, if you look at other countries, so. And, uh, by the way, the truth is, we never taught CRT and watched kind of scut it, it's not a fact, so, here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
The board received emails from Joe Morabito and Veronica Valli.
Thank you very much. Okay, this concludes our meeting for the night. Our next meeting is on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Our next Board of Trustees meeting, I mean, twenty, it says twenty twenty-one. It says twenty, it says twenty twenty-one, so that's a typo on the agenda. So, everybody, bless yourself back, uh, no, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, uh, after graduations. I think the last, no, last graduation is the next week, during graduations. Yeah.